All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, ratification of payment of bills. Rory.
All right. To Grand County Bills to be approved for Thompson Springs Fire District 820, 2019. Total bills, eighty-three dollars and forty-six cents. Total bills and payroll, six hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-six cents.
I move to ratify.
And I move to ratify. There we go.
Was that a second? Motion made by Rory Paxman, seconded by Terry Morris. I'll call for a roll call vote. Greg Halliday?
Aye.
Jaylen Hawks?
Aye.
Mary McGann?
Yes.
Terry Morris?
Yes.
Rory Paxman?
Yes.
Evan Clapper, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, Fire Chief's Report. Chief Markham.
Absent.
He is absent. Moving on, any new business?
Did you provide a report?
I was just digging to see if there was something buried in there. Did anyone see Chief's Report attached?
She has like... He did provide it.
Let me dig back in here. I thought I'd seen one.
What are you looking for?
The Chief's Report? Fire Chief's Report? You've got it? Do you mind reading that to us briefly?
Sure.
Thanks.
Recent incidents. On August the 6th, possible vehicle gas leak, Thompson Visitor Center. Was handled by Moab Valley Fire Department. On the 7th of August, there was a brush fire along Highway 191 at mile post 150. Looks like there's quite a bit of vehicles went out on that. Involved about three acres. And they had a state road grader involved as well. On the 11th, they had a vehicle fire on Interstate 70, mile post 211. Moab Fire District E2 Command Vehicle rolled on that one. On the 7th, they did training with hose rolls. And Thompson Springs Fire District E41 earned nine hundred and seventy-three dollars working on two state fires outside of the district boundaries in the last two months. That's it.
Great. Thanks for that. Any new business? Any old business? Any future considerations? Any need for a public hearing? Any need for a closed session? All right, seeing none, we have completed our agenda and I would adjourn this meeting at 4:07. Do we need a pause on the recording or anything?
We don't.
All right, next up, welcome. It is Tuesday, August 20th at 4:07. I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Grand County Council. Those in attendance are Greg Halliday, Jaylen Hawks, Mary McGann, Terry Morris, Rory Paxman, Evan Clapper, Ruth Dillon, and Chris Baird. We are expecting Councilmember Wells to join us later. First up is Pledge of Allegiance. Walt Dabney, would you leave it in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for that. Approval of minutes. You have some minutes. Mary?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the Grand County Council regular meeting for Tuesday, May 7th, Tuesday, May 21st, and Tuesday, June 4th. And authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Terry Morris. Any discussion?
Yes.
Please.
First of all, I'll say I did not see the June 4th ones till now. I must have missed those in the email, but... I know I had changes. Maybe not. Okay, on the... Oh, I know I was confused. The first set of minutes, it said I was not there. And in reading through them, I was sure I was there, but then I realized I had just had surgery, so I was watching it on YouTube. Okay, so I solved that mystery. On the 21st, just a slight math error perhaps in the ratification of payment of bills, that total, it's like thirty cents off.
Okay, I'll check that.
And I believe that is all I have.
Thanks for that. Any further discussion? Greg?
I've got May 7th and I've got May 21st, but I don't have any due.
I think that came in today, I believe. Or is that... Maybe I just saw it this morning. Is it? I sent it yesterday, probably in the evening or something. You can postpone it. Okay, I may have a chance to read it.
I can't vote on the June.
All right, so substitute motion made by Greg Halliday to approve May 7th and May 21st, seconded by Jaylen Hawks. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. I would entertain a motion to postpone June 4th, June 10th, June 18th, July 2nd, July 9th, July 16th, July 18th, and August 6th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Terry Morris. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, ratification of payment of bills.
Grand County Bills to be approved for 820, 2019. Total bills, one million, two hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-three cents. Total payroll, two hundred and... Two hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. Total bills and payroll, one million, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighteen cents. All ready for ratification.
Motion made by Rory Paxman, seconded by Terry Morris. Any further discussion? Call for a roll call vote. Greg Halliday?
Aye.
Jaylen Hawks?
Yes.
Mary McGann?
Yes.
Terry Morris?
Yes.
Rory Paxman?
Aye.
Evan Clapper, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, we just have a standing item on the agenda for council member disclosures. This is just a reminder for any members that might have disclosures to be made in regards to tonight's agenda. Jaylen?
Yes, I have a disclosure to reiterate that I've made multiple times in public meetings that I am the co-owner of a B&amp;B in unincorporated Grand County. And I believe that will pertain to one of the agenda items. Oh, perhaps not.
Do you note it?
Yes, you do. Do it?
You do. It's agenda item... No, that's high.
No, you don't. She doesn't. No.
Bases are covered. Thanks for that.
There we go.
You never disclose too much. Mary?
Yes. I would like to make a motion that we not do council reports and futures considerations this evening because we have members of our... Our chair needs to leave early. Or we could postpone him towards the end of the meeting, whichever we want. But I would like to either not have council reports and future considerations tonight or postpone it. Which do... Does anybody have any...
It's a motion.
Okay, I move that we not have general council reports and future considerations tonight.
All right. What was it? Motion to remove council member reports from tonight's agenda made by Mary McGann, seconded by Greg Halliday. Any further discussion?
I believe she included future considerations.
Oh, yes, and future considerations.
But do you want to keep that or not? I make a substitute motion to postpone it. Either that or make it quick now because I know that you've got...
To table or postpone?
That's table is what I mean. Thank you.
Okay. Motion to table general council reports and future considerations made by Jaylen Hawks, seconded by Mary McGann. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. For the audience, we have some early meetings at 9:00 AM in Salt Lake tomorrow, so I am going to be leaving early today to tackle the drive tonight. So that was the reason for tabling. Next up, elected official reports. Seeing none, council administrator report.
Oh, mostly just study committee business. You'll hear all about it tonight.
Thank you. Department reports. Seeing none. Agency reports, see none. Citizens to be heard. This is for the portion of the meeting for citizens speak on an item that is not on the agenda. If you would like to speak on an item that is on the agenda, you'd fill out one of these cards in the back and you can put your name. And at the top of the card, there's a little spot hidden for which agenda item you'd like to speak on. And we'll call you up when we get to that. Any other citizens to be heard or any citizens? Next up, presentations. Item K, presentation on optional plan for Grand County government as recommended by the Grand County Change and Forwardment Government Study Committee. You've got the whole team, most of the team, a lot of the team, a small fraction of the team.
We have a quorum.
We do. It was noticed on the...
Chance social.
I don't think all four of them should present together.
Marcy and Walt and myself will present then.
I would say only three at the table. Otherwise, you're hitting a quorum issue.
But they're not voting.
But they're not voting on anything.
You can sit down.
Whatever. This is not how it was planned. Because of perception.
They are on the agenda. Okay, moving right along. Thank you.
I give up.
Thank you for having us. Over the past several months, the study committee meeting has met relentlessly. To go over the plan, to go over the plan that we have had, we've gone through each and every meeting, open, transparent, every step of the way. Although there have been critiques that we weren't transparent, we took the unique step of reading our entire optional plan line by line and discussing every individual portion of it. And we did the same for the report that you have before you. It is not a popular topic that we have undertaken, but it is something that we've done with diligence and put our time and effort in. Before you, you have three independents and a Democrat. Out of the entire makeup of the study committee, we had three independents, three Republicans, and one independent, or one Democrat. It was a socially mixed group with varying backgrounds, varying thoughts, and at the end, we came to a recommendation that we all agreed upon and we all signed. We are here today to give you our time if you have questions about it, but honestly, at this point, it's in the hands of Christina Salome. If it is to make the ballot, it would have to be found that it is constitutional as a whole and that it meets all provisions of the law. If changed, it would not make it on this year's ballot. We would encourage the county council to back the plan, to encourage Ms. Salome to take the time that she needs to review the plan and have it completed so it could be a part of the ballot this year. Doing so would allow us to move forward as a community, pass this topic, and move on. We have read the plan, we've reviewed the plan, and pretty much lived the plan through nine-hour sessions on a Friday and then a following Monday. The amount of help that we received through Ruth Dillon's office, Tara Collins, and Briney have been substantial. And without it, we wouldn't be able to do what we've done. One of the best legal minds that we had, Gavin Anderson, he was the one that did the presentation on HB 224 originally, was one of the reasons why we were able to do so much work when we were able to. We did not get the world's greatest start because there was a delay due to litigation, but we were able to overcome that, take the time that we need to get this before you folks today. We know it is the 11th hour before an election, but we are confident in what we've done is constitutional, fair, and a resolution that, I think on one vote, we had a four-three split, but everything else, six to one or seven-zero. So Walt Dabney and Marcy Till have comments, and Mr. Greenberg may as well. We're open to any questions that you might have, and we appreciate you taking the time to hear us and listen to us. Thank you. Walt?
Thank you, I'm Walt Dabney. And Stephen just said most of what I was going to say. I was the council, you're nominated this project. I didn't know what I was getting into, but it turned out to be quite an interesting, I won't say fun, but an interesting time. The thing I will tell you is we got... We didn't think we were going to be here today because we got started three months late. Instead of January, we didn't get to start until March because of the lawsuit. When we went to the open houses and the Fourth of July thing, it started to be apparent, I think, to all of us that the kind of options the citizens of this county wanted are pretty clear, and the ones that they had no interest in were also pretty clear. So we really started cranking on that. Without Ruth, Briney, and Tara, we wouldn't be here today as well. They were absolutely outstanding support. And we got more comments at the open houses because of the work they did, it was on the wall or in handouts where people could sit there and look at what we have right now and what the four options that we had to choose from were very clearly. And if they were confused, we sat there and we talked it through to them. And the other thing, the committee and Stephen said that we were a dog from every town. I mean, we really were, all over the political spectrum. And I've done a lot of this kind of stuff, different but similar, and I've never worked with a group of people that there was not an ugly moment in the whole thing, and we were talking about some pretty serious stuff. We listened to each other, we talked through till everybody had their questions answered or what they wanted to say stated, and then we either moved on or did our vote. And it was really pretty amazing. We talked about Gavin. This wouldn't have happened. In fact, we were assured that it was going to be three more years before this did until Gavin Anderson walked in, knowing more accidentally than most people do on purpose about how county government in Utah works. He didn't have to go research anything. He could sit there and keep us on track, and we moved really fast. The other really good thing that I think Marcy and Bob will agree that we did is right off the bat, we unanimously picked the youngest member of our group to be the chairman of this group. And every one of us will tell you, he did a marvelous, professional, and very mature job of keeping us old folks in line and keeping us focused and that kind of thing. Helping him, of course, with Ruth blowing the whistle every time we started to do something we weren't supposed to. And that all helped. In closing, I'll just say we passed our optional plan, 7-0, forwarded it on to for you to look at and for the county attorney and for Chris to look at. Chris also, toward the end of this thing, was invaluable to us sitting in on at least two. Our last two meetings went nine hours, and Chris was here for the whole thing, helping us also figure out chronology and how things were going to work, and we all really appreciate that. For this dynamic, diverse, and complex county, I think we made a good recommendation. And now it's time to send it on to the voters and let them decide if we did. Okay. Thank you.
My name's Marcy Till, and I sent Ruth an email like after the first article in the newspaper that said, you know, they might appoint a study committee. And I thought, oh, that's something I would be willing to work on. And then I didn't hear anything for months and didn't think anything about it. And I got another email and said, do you want to do it? I said, sure. And I have been very, very pleasantly surprised. This is kind of my first foray into anything remotely political, really. And I came into it thinking, you know, I'm going to be open-minded, I'm kind of a blank slate in terms of what form of government might be best. I saw advantages and disadvantages to, you know, commission versus council. And I learned more about county government in Utah than I ever thought I would know or wanted to know. And I worked with a group of people that were very diverse, very opinionated, and it's the closest I've ever come to working in a group where we really, really strived to achieve consensus before we put something to a vote. So I... And my big thing in the beginning was, and you know, I was reading from the law, our charge was to study form of government and see if there wasn't something that would be more efficient, economical, and meet the needs of the citizens of Grand County. And that process was to include public input and to study the different forms of government, look at what we've had in the past. And I feel 100% good about our due diligence in terms of meeting that charge. And we certainly went the extra mile to try and involve the public and to also get feedback from department heads and county government. I felt like those are the people working in the trenches. They certainly have an opinion that's very valuable, and they're going to be responsible for carrying on the day-to-day operation of the county regardless of what form of government we go forward with. operation of the county, um, regardless of what form of government we go forward with. And so, you know, we came to the conclusions that we did, I think, in a very informed, educated, reasonable manner. And, um, and I feel like we hired, as our attorney, probably the most experienced, knowledgeable person in the state of Utah to create these documents. And I feel like if he feels that they are constitutionally sound, I have a lot of confidence that they probably are. I never dreamed, in my wildest imagination, that there might be people slash organizations slash whoever that might not want this to go forward in a timely fashion. I was quite shocked that that could be a reality, because in my opinion, making a recommendation and getting it to the voters in a timely fashion, I think is what the legislature intended. They didn't intend to change your government and have it drag out over the course of three and a half years before the new government is in place. Um, if that's the reality, that's the reality, but, uh, I'm, I'm hoping that our county attorney, you know, can support these documents and we can take it to the voter, because the voters are aware of what's going on right now, and it's in the forefront of their minds.
Within the constraints of, on close examination, what has proved to be a really poorly-written piece of legislation, there was riddled not only with internal contradictions, but contradictions with existing election law. I think we did as good a job as could be done. The, we, in our rush to complete, um, our work, um, we were not able to give the county attorney the full 45 days, uh, which the law allows to review our work. Um, she got about half of that, and so there are, uh, possibilities that she simply will run out of time. That's one possibility, another is that she'll complete her review, and the third is that she'll require some changes, and, and we'll see. But as our outside counsel told us more than once, gee, yeah, you're right, the law's really unfair on this. Um, and again, there's always room among attorneys for disagreement, so we'll see what happens. But I should echo what my colleague said, that additionally, we had two former county council people on the panel, Judy Carmichael and myself, uh, which added some perspective. And, uh, I have to say, even though I was on the wrong end of the, uh, the Q 6-1 votes, in fact, two motions I made didn't even get a second, I have to say that the committee very carefully considered my viewpoint, and Steve did a great job making sure that every opinion was heard. I don't believe, even when I disagreed with the majority, that I was, uh, not heard out and considered. So, I think, again, the constraints that they put, you two four, you two did a great job. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Folks have any questions for us? Roy?
I have a couple of questions.
So, how did, when you guys voted on this, how, how was the votes? How did it, how did it end up? Three, four?
There were lots of votes.
Two, one?
Which voter you?
The, on the, on the?
Seven, zero.
Seven, zero.
On the final document.
On the final document.
But there, there were some other smaller votes, I mean, the one, um, we had votes on how to, how to work out timing, how to continue terms on, there, there are quite a few different smaller votes within the actual document, sometimes even changing words.
Every component.
Every single component. We, we essentially take, took it line by line and said, alright, here's paragraph X. Um, anybody disagree with paragraph X? Well, what does X, what does this term in X mean? We talk about it. Gavin Anderson would give us a heads up. Somebody'd say, well, I, I take the, the position that we should have, uh, Q in there. Everybody feel good about Q? No, I dislike Q. Why do you dislike Q? Thoughts? And then discussion, and then vote on every term, and that's why we were there for nine hours. That's because anything anybody had a question on, we would go through it. Um, yeah, so it depended on, on each item.
I would guess there must have been somewhere between 30 and 50 votes during our deliberation. There were a lot. And there were also a lot of decisions where there was such apparent agreement that we didn't need to vote, and those numbered another 30 or 40 instances. Um, so by the time we got to the end, uh, it was a consensus document, which I guess means that no one stood up and said, I can't live with this.
So, um, so we're just waiting for Christina Salome to finish up the report, and then, Chris, is there a way to get it on the ballot this year, or?
If Christina gets it back by, I think if it comes back to me by September 6th, the law says it shall be on the ballot, so, yes.
If I could just say real quick, Rory, if you had an interest in any given piece of this thing, Ruth's got the vote on the minutes, and you can see what the vote was on and everything. Most of them were very strong, unanimous, or within one or two, but you can see if you have a particular interest.
There was only one split vote, 4-3, in the whole shebang, which I found astounding.
Tara?
Yes, I would like to thank you, uh, for your monumental efforts and the time that you put in and, and the thought that you put into it. Irrespective of, of the results or whether or not you agree with the results, it's immaterial, uh, in, in comparison to the job that you've done. So, I wanna thank you very much and, and let you know that I really appreciate your work and service on it. Thank you so much.
Mary?
I just wanna also echo the thank you and, uh, the relief I had, because it was such a rocky beginning to this entire process. There were, you know, lots of inter, you know, internal disagreements, uh, you know, letters to the editor, it was just rocky on every level and to the point that there was a lawsuit. But once we had our, your committee in place, the processes moved so smoothly and so professionally, and, uh, not only was, am I appreciative, I was surprised, and I, um, wanna thank you very much. It was, from the, if it would've gone on like it had before, you'd probably be doing the study committee for three years.
Uh, Jalen?
Uh, yeah, I echo their thoughts absolutely, wholeheartedly appreciate everything that you've done, it's a ton of work, and thank you for being willing to take on something that you knew in the beginning was going to be a huge monumental thing to do. And I have one or two questions, really quick ones. So, there's a council, well, no, there's a county manager, and then in section 2.07, there, it reads staff to the council, the county council may appoint a council administrator, is that separate from the council manager? Okay, the county manager, alright. And then there was one other place, and I cannot find it, but if and when I do, I will email you, but, um, 'cause I was working from three different documents and none of them seemed to have been marked. Where I was led to, I, I had the impression that the county manager, I know that that person has automatic standing in, in all council meetings, but it led me to, the phrasing led me to believe that, uh, they were part of the council? Okay. I'll find it and email it to you, maybe you can explain it to me.
That's all, yeah?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I just reply? So, there, there is the possibility for the county council, the legislative body, to have their own administrator while the executive branch has the county manager.
We did have one Sidumson comment card, Carrie Dabney.
Good afternoon, um, my name is Carrie Dabney, and I wanna thank you for this opportunity to get my observations on the record. As someone who has followed the course of HB 224 very closely, I want to urge the members of the Grand County Council to support the recommendation of the study committee to place the optional plan proposal on the ballot this November. Despite a three-month delay in getting started, the study committee has done its due diligence in following the law, which required them to do the following. Study the form of government within the county and compare it with other forms. Also determine whether the administration of local government in the county could be strengthened, made more clearly responsive, or accountable to the people, or significantly improved in the interest of economy and efficiency. And to hold public hearings and community forums and other means the committee considers appropriate to disseminate information and stimulate public discussion of the committee's purposes, progress, and conclusions. And finally, to file a written report of the study committee's findings and recommendations. The attorney hired by the study committee to help draft the optional plan was Gavin Anderson, a Salt Lake County Deputy Attorney, who over his three-decade career, literally wrote the book on changing forms of government in Utah. Without Mr. Anderson's expertise and hard work, the optional plan would never have been finished in time for this November ballot. It is my understanding that the optional plan was submitted to the county council, the county clerk, and the county attorney a week ago on August 13th, and that according to 7152A 501, if the county attorney finds that a proposed optional plan does not violate a statutory or constitutional provision 60 days or less before the election, then it shall be on the ballot. And I just encourage you to support, um, the work of the county attorney in getting this on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to all you all. I know you've done a lot of diligent work on it, and I appreciate you putting in the time. I, I think everyone went, uh, exceeded our expectations as well, so, we appreciate that. We do have, uh, I think you already received the letter that we're acknowledging, uh, the receipt of the recommendation of the optional plan, uh, but we do appreciate it, and, uh, I'm glad that it wasn't our role to, uh, duke it out. So, thanks for taking that on. Next up is, uh, general business action items. Item L, adopting proposed safety incentive program. Nate Baker.
Hello, evening. Um, so with the safety incentive program, you heard Darren with the trust speak on the, um, July 16th meeting about how we need to get the program, a program in place to continue to receive a 5% return on our workers' comp and our liability premiums. Um, what we can do with that return is continue to fund the program, and what that looks like, it allows our employees to think about safety month to month, um, it gives them a small monthly reward for being safe. Um, we've kinda set it up so that they are on teams. If your team does not have an accident in that month, everybody on the team gets a $5 gift certificate to somewhere within the county. Um, we currently do have the money from the TAP program in the prior years to fund through the rest of 2019. Really what I need tonight is just, um, an approval so we can move forward with the program and continue to receive that return on our liability and hopefully lower our E-mod rating below the 1.55 and get it below a 1, hopefully, and save a lot of money on our premiums.
Great. Mary?
I move to approve the team appreciation recognition program through the trust and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Terry Morris. Any further discussion? Greg?
Yeah, the only thing I would say is, uh, I dealt with gift certificates before, cards and all that other stuff, I've got a whole pile of them that I've never finished using.
Sure.
So, I would say, rather than go to the effort of getting a card or certificate, just give them a $5 bill.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
May I?
Please.
So, I'm just curious, I didn't see, first of all, in, in there what E-mod means, what it is, and then the second thing is, I'm just curious about, and it would relate to what we pay for workers' comp and liability? What's 5% of that? I'm assuming that you have full confidence that we'll cover the number of employees we have, and my third question was, is this part-time employees as well?
Yeah, this is countywide employees. Um, I don't know the exact number of what our premiums are right now. Uh, the E-mod is our insurance rating, so kind of like our risk rating. Being above a 1 means that we're paying on the dollar, a $1.55 right now for our premiums. If we can get it below a 1, then we'll pay matching, dollar for dollar, and below a 1, you'd be paying 95 cents to every dollar. Um, so, E-mod goes off of three years in numbers, workers' comp, and any accidents. So, if we can get those accidents down, then over the long haul, we'll see our, our premiums drop. Thinking they're somewhere in those 70,000, Chris? Maybe have a general idea of what we pay year to year on that?
I've never added up the total specifically of workers' comp, but it's different for every employee depending on their occupation, and so it's, I believe, assessed as a percentage. Usually, when I do the budget, I think I just run off of an average of them all when I, when I do the budget, but when they actually pay it, it's based on, um, their occupation and their level of risk or whatever, but I think it's about, I hesitate to say, but it seems like around 1.5, 1.6% on average of their salary.
Of their salary. Which is definitely probably $5.
Oh, it's, it's, uh, it's significant, but, um, yeah, it's assessed as a percentage of their salary, so it depends on what job they're, they're performing and how much they're making as a total.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
May I just add?
Please.
Uh, this has been talked about at length, um, at the leadership meetings, which are held monthly, uh, we've been talking about it for actually more than a year, the road department's already doing their safety program, but more recently, Renee has made sure that this particular program has been talked about with the leadership, uh, team, which is the department heads and elected officials, um, and so they know, and they know that they've gotta roll it out with their teams. Um, so I wanted you to know that part, and I also wanted you to know that if it, if I missed this, I might be repeating something that's already been said, that the funding would come from the trust accountability program, where we're already getting money back because of, I think, because our premiums? I, I don't know why.
We've, so the trust had the TAP program before, this is now the TARP, um, and we've received money back from the TAP, they've done away with that and moved to more of a recognition program. So, we're rewarding employees for being safe and just kinda keeping that in their minds month to month.
Call a vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next up is item M, approving proposed project list to be submitted to the Grand County Transportation Special Service Districts for consideration of project funding for 2020. Bill Jackson.
Bill Jackson, Road Department's advisor. Get my right papers. So, yeah, every year, um, essentially required to bring a, a list of proposed projects to the council to approve, to forward on to the Transportation Special Service District to see if, essentially, if they wanna participate in those projects. And thus, to the projects that I've submitted this year, storm drainage projects, as you know, the, the Transportation District now can, uh, provide funding for storm drainage pertaining to our storm drainage master plan. And, uh, of course, you know, I don't know in what detail you want me to go into, but we, we finished phase one of the Jackson Street stormwater mitigation, and now we're looking into phase two. So, I put that on the, on the project list for submittal to the, uh, transportation board. And also, the Murphy Lane storm drainage tie-in, we're in the process with- And also, the Murphy Lane Storm Drain Tie-In, we're in the process, which is coming up here also, to do some work on Arbor, Road Reconstruction and whatnot. Part of that is some storm drainage inside the development, inside the, or rather, the Arbor Development. And outside of that, that's why I call it the tie-in, we need some storm drainage to gather up on Murphy and get it down to back rate, which we can tie into this project, but we just need to make it a standalone project on the storm drainage there. Any questions?
Greg?
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Move to approve the 2020 project list to be submitted to the Grand County Transportation Special Service District for consideration of funding and authorize the Chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Mary McGann, or Greg Halliday, seconded by Mary McGann. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. For that, next up is Item N, Approving Proposed Bid Award for Construction of the Arbor Heckless Subdivision Road Improvements. Bill Jackson.
Okay. So, as you recall, I think it was in April, the Council approved for our engineer of record, Jones and DeMille, to start designing and getting, you know, bid documents and whatnot of Arbor and Heckless subdivisions. And as you recall, the infrastructure in both those areas are deteriorated badly. And we've done that. We put a notice out for bid, and we've received one bid. So, that's what I'm asking for approval, basically, approval of the notice of award.
Mary?
I move to approve the bid award to the Kelgore Companies LLC, DBA, LeGrand Johnsons for the Arbor Heckless Subdivision Road Improvement in the amount of $824,350 and authorize the Chair to sign all associated documents.
Second. Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Greg Halliday. Any discussion? I would point out that it's within, or ask it's within budget?
It is within budget.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Look forward to that. That bike path gets wet over there. Item O, Approving Justice Court Judge Nominating Committee Appointments. Subcommittee Member McGann.
Hello. I want to make one change. Ruth had mentioned that there was someone from the Court, Justice Court Department that was, talked about being on, and I did not get that information. That was my error. And I spoke with Bob Greenberg, and he would be happy if Marsha Humphries took his place. So, rather than Kelly Greenvoss, Aubrey Davis, and Bob Greenberg, I recommend that it be Kelly Greenvoss, Aubrey Davis, and Marsha Humphries.
Was that a motion?
I wanted to add, I want, well, yes, that's a motion. I move to nominate Kelly Greenvoss, Aubrey Davis, and Marsha Humphries, the three individuals to serve as volunteers on the Five Person Justice Court Judge Nomination Commission in order to participate in interviewing final candidates for the Justice Court Judge so as to forward a reclamation of three to five individuals for appointment by the County Council. I, the appointment will be, did I already say those? Kelly, Kelly Greenvoss, Aubrey Davis, and Marsha Humphries. And also, I suggest the Chair to sign all associated documents.
Second.
Motion made by Mary McGann and seconded by Jalen Hawks. Discussion?
Sir Chair.
Please.
I forwarded to the nominating commission some names and a request that the Deputy County Attorney be appointed to this commission. So, so far, with these three individuals who are community members, and Rayanna Medina, who's been chosen by the city, we have no one who practices in that court on this commission, which I think is problematic. The fifth pick is the Regional Bar, and I do expect that they will pick a local attorney. I don't know who that is, but I don't expect it to be the Deputy County Attorney. So, I think this is our moment to make sure we have a presence, a legal presence on the board. So, with these three, we don't have that, if I'm concerned.
What's our timeframe for the nomination?
I believe the application deadline is August 12th. So, the commission, the nominating commission, who will be doing interviewing of these applicants, should be happening soon.
It was extended to the 3rd.
September 3rd, that's right. That's the deadline.
Excuse me?
The AOC approved extending the application deadline to Tuesday, September 3rd, as shown in the vacancy announcement.
I don't know if, I think y'all didn't get my email, if y'all discussed it.
I got your email. I looked at it, and I chose, you know, the first, you know, I started calling, the first person that I got in person was Bob Greenberg, so I asked him. And then, I got a call from, you know, so it was just, yes, I did. And that was one of the names, and I just, you know, in some ways, it was just because that was the phone number I was easily, you know, received. But, you know, it wasn't. So, I don't know. I'll let somebody else decide where we want to go.
Could we substitute the Deputy Attorney into the Bob Greenberg spot?
I did. I already did.
Instead of Marsha?
I would prefer to myself, just because I know Marsha, this was discussed at the court itself, and Judge Tubbs really wanted, if I understand. So, I felt like that's why I moved to have Marsha. I would feel more comfortable calling either Aubrey or Kelly to ask them if they would mind, you know, stepping down, but I don't feel comfortable asking for Marsha to step down myself.
Okay. Just a thought, if we were going to ask one of the other two, I would prefer that we keep Kelly on because she is in that court constantly as well. So...
And so is Aubrey.
Oh, so is Aubrey.
Really?
They're all solid choices. They really are. But we really need an attorney who's practicing in that court as well, and we don't know what the Regional Bar is going to do, so this is not.
Well, I would suggest that we talk to Aubrey and Kelly and see if one of them want to step aside and, you know, I quite frankly misunderstood your email. Otherwise, I would have said something. And I had thought that that was an automatic.
That that was all the same group. That there wasn't one that stood out above everybody else.
I was trying to say, appoint our Deputy County Attorney and then choose from these other people for your other two.
I did not read it that way. I just thought these were...
Anyway, so we do have a motion on the table.
So, I would like to make a friendly amendment to the motion and say that we speak with Kelly Greenvoss and Aubrey Davis to see if they have any interest in.
So, is that a motion to postpone until the first meeting in September?
That would be a good idea.
Substitute motion.
Substitute motion made by Terry Morris, seconded by Rory Paxman. Any further discussion?
I don't want to be on the committee. I don't want to make the phone calls.
I'll make them. I don't care. That's fine.
Okay. That sounds like a, do we need all three committee members to bring this back up?
Typically, your bylaws do request to have three when you do an outside thing like that.
So, if somebody else makes the phone calls, will you still give a head nod, or is that...
Yeah, I just feel uncomfortable making the phone calls because I...
All right. I'll let the Subcommittee figure that out.
Yeah, I'll be happy to make the phone calls if you give me the numbers.
I may have another time.
Okay.
All right. Motion to postpone on the table. All those in favor?
This was supposed to be simple.
Aye. Aye. Was that unanimous? That was unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Item P, Approving Proposed Option and Ground Lease Agreement with Insight Towers Development 2 LLC to Build a Cell Tower Located at Old Spanish Trail Arena. Postponed from August 6th. Steve Swift.
Okay. I came before Council early in 2018 to see if Council was interested in discussing this further. And as a result of that Council meeting, I was asked to look into it and present it at a later date. This is a later date. This is Tierney Rowe, who joined me the first time. She's from Insight and will speak on their behalf if necessary. As I see it, you know, there's a little bit of opposition to the cell tower. It still provides a good revenue base for the county. There's a complaint about the amount of money involved, that it wasn't enough from a member of the public, and I respectfully reply to that in the fact that he said $1,400 a month is not worthwhile. That's for 2,500 feet of, square feet of dirt with a tower on it. So, a house in Moab, at the moment, for 21,000 square feet is $2,000 a month. You know, so it was in the realm of reality. As I see it, the amount of money that we would make is a minimum of $1,450 a month, a maximum of $2,650 a month if we get four carriers on the tower. The benefits of that would be, of course, the revenue, cell service improvement in Spanish Valley area, and access to the tower for either OSTA or Sheriff's Department or somebody in the county for better service in that area. And also, if we use part of the tower, we increase security in that area, which would be an advantage to us. We get a lot of vandalism down that area.
Well, that's about the summary of it. How about you?
I have a question.
You have a question?
I would say, motion then discussion.
Motion, you want a motion before discussion?
That typically works.
Oh, okay. I move to approve the proposed option and ground lease agreement with Insight Towers Development 2 LLC to build a cell tower located at Old Spanish Trail Arena, OSTA, and authorize the Chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Rory Paxman. Discussion?
Yeah.
Yep?
Well, I know that this tower will bring in not only revenue for us, but it's going to bring in a lot of revenue for other companies. And I think it's going to be a larger, a greater amount of money that this cell tower is going to earn for, say, Verizon or other companies that choose to use it. And I would rather see a percentage of the profits given to Grand County as opposed to just a rental for the space.
Terry?
Yeah, I think that the financial aspects of it are out of kilter, you know, because I think that many of these companies that build the cell towers make an incredible revenue from all the different antennas and user fees that they make, and having a flat fee versus a percentage of everything that goes up on the tower just doesn't sit right with me. I think that the percentage would be much better financial arrangement for the county, number one. Number two, I've had a lot of pushback personally from folks in the county that do not want a tower of 130 feet there, nor do they want the lighting that is a subsequent part of it. So, I think that that, in light of the whole dark skies push that we, that the Council and that the community has signed off on, makes it also a little bit problematic for me. And, believe me, I have nothing against telecommunications or tech, but, you know, I think that there are probably as good or better locations irrespective of the income that it brings to, to the, or proposed income that it brings to the, to the site itself, to the arena site.
Greg?
Yeah, comment, I, on my last trip up to Thompson, I came back at night past the airport. They have a lot of towers up there, and they have red lights on that do not affect dark sky. Okay? So, I just want to make that comment, that when I drove by there, I saw no difference. Red lights on a tower do not impact dark sky at all, as far as I can tell.
Well, in answer to that, it was my understanding that there was going to be some additional lighting to light the parking area around that, around that sign. And if I'm mistaken, then I apologize for that, but that's my understanding of it.
With the lighting, original agreement, we, Insight offered as lighting for the outdoor arena, and we got rid of that to try and get a better revenue base. Oh, still included. But anyway, that will be on minimal amount of times, you know, no worse than the ball fields. And now, it would have to comply with dark sky. So, you know...
So, the tower will, do the dark sky ordinance have the same?
It has to.
There's a variance in the ordinance for any kind of safety things, so any kind of lighting that's for safety use.
Yeah, but this is not safety. You know, it's, the one on the top would be the red light, but the others will be, they'll have to comply because it's for the purpose of the arena.
Chrissy?
There are a few things I'd like to point out. We did, as of August 6th, when this was first on the agenda, work out that same day some of our final legal concerns. I will say, it was not forthcoming from the company to address our legal concerns. And so, it was at the point that I said, I'm recommending against this on legal issues, and here are these particular terms, that they said, oh, fine, we'll agree to it. And I want you guys to understand that. I also want you to understand that the amount of property at issue, I think is somewhat misrepresented. There is 130-foot fall zone, which we have limited ability or no ability to use the land all around the 130-foot tall tower. The term was increased from 20 to 40 years from the first draft you saw to this draft. So, we're obligating ourselves for 40 years at this income rate. With each renewal term, which is every five years, we did negotiate in the ability to possibly renegotiate a market rate, but it's a burden on us to hire an appraisal and prove it to them. It's a pretty high bar, quite frankly, and we don't have commercial appraisers in Grand County anyway. So, it's, it's not a, it doesn't bring me much comfort, that provision. You guys did specifically ask for revenue share. The common use of that term is a percentage of profits. They have said, no, thank you. And I did ask them for their best offer, and they said the flat rate that's in the agreement is the best they can do. They did increase that from 300 per customer to 400 per customer. They have not provided us with design to date and, you know, have continually said, hey, that'll come later. But I do find that a little bit problematic. We haven't seen any proposed designs. And, you know, so I do have concerns. I think that this, I agree with Terry's comments, which I think were quite articulate, that financially, I don't think it makes sense, and we're tying up not just one of our most beloved county properties, in my opinion, but a really valuable county property for 40 years, if you agree to this.
Thanks for that. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I didn't realize, yes. May I?
Yes.
I didn't realize. I thought in the agreement I saw it said 10 years, so, and then it's 20, and now it's 40. That's a really long time. The other question I had, so, Steve, it looks like it's in the middle of the horse track? Is that where? Oh.
Well, in the center of the infield.
Well, in the center of the infield, yeah.
Okay. And it will comply with dark skies lighting. One of the other complaints and some of the citizen comments was it would prohibit construction of an access road to 191. Has that ever been in the plan for that property? Then my last question, I think, is, now I cannot remember. Okay. It's lost? If it comes back before this item's over with, I'll let you know.
We talked about zoning last time, Steve, but remind us whether this property is properly zoned for this, or does that require rezone?
It'd have to have a rezone.
Yeah, I did remember the other issue. So when that land was donated, I thought it was donated for the recreation use only? Could we, can we even do this on this land? When it was donated by BLM?
Oh, no, you can't, this part.
Oh, this part was not donated by BLM?
Correct. This part was donated by the White family.
Okay. All right.
As far as the access road goes, there is an access road now, and even the fall zone is doubled, but it's doubled the height of the tower, so it's well, it doesn't preclude any access at this stage. Yeah, is it all right if Tierney comments on that?
Please.
So I think some of the history of the leasing is probably worth it to share with you and give you a little bit more clarity. So our boilerplate lease template is actually 55 years. And the county came back and asked us for a shorter term. We came back and met at, in the middle of 40 years because the way that it works is the longer the term correlates with how much rent we can pay. So if there's a shorter term, obviously, we're not going to be able to offer you as much rent because we're going to have to recoup the cost of the front end loaded capital for the project within a shorter period of time. If the term's longer, then we're able to have a higher rental rate because we're able to recoup that cost over a longer period of time. In addition to that, we also have tenants who have a minimum term length that they'll sign in terms of a liability risk with us, so Verizon, AT&amp;T, Sprint. So they will only sign a lease with us if the underlying lease, which is the lease with Grand County, has a term that is the same or longer than their term, which is why we're asking for the 40-year term. So yes, you'd be going into it, should you approve it with eyes wide open, that this is a long-term lease and that this is going to be playing out, you know, over the, the 40-year term. Of course, like Mrs. Sloan said, we have put in the, the lease agreement that we will look at an escalator, an, an increased escalator, and then also real estate appraisal method for any additional renewal term, which is not standard, but something that we acquiesce to at request of the, the county attorney. In addition, we, I feel like we've been making a concerted effort to meet the county's requests in terms of their concerns. I know one of the concerns was rent, so we did increase the base rent. The other concern was revenue share, and we increased that as well. I know there's been a little bit of a focus on a fixed, fixed flat fee. So in the industry, there's, there's two different types of revenue share. There's a fixed flat fee revenue share, and there's a percentage revenue share. Regardless of how it's worded in the lease, the $400 is still a specific percentage of the money that's coming in from the tenant. So if we wanted to say, okay, $400 is X percent of this, we can change that to the correlating percentage in the lease. It's still going to be the same in terms of the money that's offered to the county. The, the, the other portion that I want you to understand here is, I've been going back and forth with our CFO saying, you know, what can we do here? How much can we offer? And he's coming back to me saying, Tierney, we're giving them almost half of the revenue that we're making for this tower. So it's not like we're not trying to put our best foot forward here. We are trying to give the county the consideration that you're looking for in terms of maximizing your utility for your property. I know that there is a fall zone that's required for the tower. I don't know, and this is something that would be outside of my wheelhouse, whether or not that precludes the county from using that space in a different capacity. I'm, I'm saying, as far as like, something other than, you know, obviously, you're not going to be using it for residential space, which would pose a concern, but outside of that, I don't know why there would be any issue or concern to use that space otherwise. I don't know, that, like I said, not my wheelhouse, something that's, somebody else can probably address, but, and then also, the, the design portion, we felt like that was something, as we had been speaking with the county council, that the county and also the community and economic develop, development director would want to have input on, which is why there hasn't been a design to date. Because we talked about design, we talked about the lighting configuration for the, the rodeo arena, and also shrouding that lighting. And actually, the tower itself wouldn't need to be lit unless the FAA came back and said it needs to be lit. And then in that instance, we could go with lighting that would comply with your, your statute in terms of the, this not disrupting, disrupting the skies and, and then also, just like I said, that the possibility of the shrouding for the lighting that we did offer. We actually did include that in, in the budget still with the increase in rent. So it's another consideration. That's also a large capital outlay that we have included as a, as just kind of a plus to the, the lease itself, an additional, I guess you would say, just something that we can do for the county in terms of adding value to that. And also, I know in the past, we've done this and we would be willing to do this, also for this tower would be, we have allowed EMS equipment on our towers at no cost to the county. So that's another positive in terms of being able to utilize this structure to add some capacity for your EMS. So those are the items I just wanted to discuss. I, I feel like we've worked, tried to work with the county attorney to get to a point where it was something that would be palatable for the county and come to you with the terms that, that I believe are the best we can do in terms of monetary consideration. So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. I'm happy to answer that.
I have a few clarifications. And this, this proposal does predate my, the beginning of my office on January 2nd, and so keep that in mind. But as of January 2nd, the term was 20 years, and now it's 40 years. So as far as we know, and, and since you last saw the agreement, it's increased, not decreased. The rent also, as of January 2nd, was set at 1,250, so I'm not aware that they have increased the rent, only this, the, the extra customers from 300 to 400. The fall zone, if we want to take on great liability and risk, we could possibly use the fall zone, but clearly, that is for items dropping from the sky or, or some component of the tower failing. And certainly, I would recommend we, we don't use the 130 feet around this. In terms of the EMS radio, and Kurt, you're here, you might want to opine, it's my understanding that our, our deficiencies are north of town, and so we've been looking at some locations near the river where we can beam down the river corridor, but this location would not help increase our capacity on our law enforcement radios.
I just want clarification, so this will not be able to be used for?
It wouldn't help us increase our capacity. We need a location for EMS and law enforcement tower north of the river, right at the river. So for example, the tram property is a pretty ideal location.
But, okay.
Any more discussion? So we have a motion on the table to approve the, do we need that restated? The option and ground lease agreement. All of those in favor? All of those opposed?
In favor.
All of us in favor? It is three to three with McGann, Morse, and Clappert opposition. So, motion fails. Next up, thanks.
Thank you.
Can I just quickly say thank you to Steve for all the efforts over the last several years? Pat Tram also was involved in this, a council member. And I know Steve is really just trying to look out for the revenues for the county and for the arena, and that's his job. I just want to commend you for going for it.
Yeah, thanks, Steve, for sure. And thanks for coming down. Next up is item Q, approving proposed recommendations to be forwarded to Rally on the Rocks event organizers to host the UTV special event in Moab, Utah, 2020.
I, yes, I would like, we have an event organizer here to talk, and then Kurt Brewer was here, and I'd like them to come up to the table in case the county council has any questions to ask them. Okay? When you get there, introduce yourselves and, so that we can get it on to you too.
Kurt Brewer, Sergeant with Grand County Sheriff's Office.
Sean Reddish, event promoter for Rally on the Rocks.
I'm, okay, I met with the event committee. We spoke for over an hour, wasn't it? And we did, I felt that the event, the people who want to put on the event are working very hard and made some changes and are willing to do what was included in the packet. Most, some of the, one of the things I wanted to point out is they are willing to pay for extra law enforcement during that time period. And the other thing that, I'm sure, I'm sure everybody's read through what is recommended, the other thing was that they felt like a lot of the problems during the Rally on the Rocks wasn't because of the participants, the people that were in Rally on the Rocks, but because of the people that came from out of town that were drawn here because of the vendors. And so there's going to be a requirement that the vendors do some education when anybody comes up to buy an item that, and there will be a poster that they will be requested to read, and they will be encouraged to follow everything that is on this list, such as, you know, not riding in residential areas between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM and, and such like that. And the people will be signing a pledge. I walked away from the meeting feeling very comfortable and that I think it would, I would feel comfortable having Rally on the Rocks continue at least for one more year. Does anybody have any questions of me or the police department or?
Well, we did have some citizen comment as well. So Neil Clark for item Q.
While he's coming up, I want to just point out on your dais, there's also a color stat.
Hello, Neil Clark. I've written the council a number of times about the Rally on the Rocks event, along with many of your constituents, and so I won't rehash those points and why it's well within your authority to deny this permit, which I would urge you to do. You know, in many ways, it's not about how this event is managed or how it runs, it's about the fact that UTVs en masse are just incompatible with quiet, peaceful way of life in a community. That, at the core is the problem here. There's also, you know, obviously, it's hard to distinguish who's part of this event and who is drawn to this event. With all due respect, I would, I would disagree that they're drawn here for the vendors, but that they're drawn here because the event is happening. I think fundamentally, we've tried this event year after year, and it results year after year in extreme frustration and outrage by the citizens of the community. I, I think at a certain point, we have to realize that it's just fundamentally incompatible with what we're trying to do with having a quality of life here. To the best of my knowledge, there's no other permitted event in the community that draws this kind of reaction from the public, sort of extreme frustration, I guess, is the way I'll, I'll couch it. And I, I do think it, it doesn't have to do with how many law enforcement personnel are involved. It doesn't have to do with necessarily how many people here for the event, has to do with the nature of the event itself. It's loud and it's disruptive, and I don't think there's a, a very good workaround to those issues, especially when you bring in many people from, from outside of the community who are drawn here, who may not even be part of the event at all. You know, I, I think in total, you know, we're, we're constantly looking for solutions to the noise and the crowding and the quality of life problems that we're all having, living in the valley. Yet we continue to sort of pour fire on these problems with, with this event in particular. It happens at an extremely busy time of the year for people working, for people, just sort of the general overload that happens after we come out of a quiet winter. And it's, it's just, I think, proven itself incompatible with the community, and I would encourage you to deny the permit. I think if you're, you know, dead set on approving this for 2020, I would urge you to make it very clear that 2020 is it, and they should, they have plenty of time to start looking for new community that would probably gladly host an event like this. So thank you.
In the packet, there's actually a variety of options for a motion presented. The main kind of variance being whether this was, because it's not typical for an event permit to come before the council for approval, there's some variations of implementing these recommendations and sending it back to the events court of any committee or, well, there's a queue there, so. Would you like to make a motion?
I think, I'm trying to think how to put this. I, I move to approve the permitting of the Rally on the Rocks on a probationary year, special event application pending submission of a completed application to include requiring permits along with the request of the Rally on the Rock event holders to implement the proposed recommendations from the Grand County Council as outlined below. No increase in the current number of participants. Require participants to sign a pledge committing to reduce noise levels when in residential and business areas in Moab. The pledge will also include preserving, protecting, and respecting the landscape, community, and the people. Participating vendors at the Rally on the Rocks must have displayed at their booth or location a poster outlining educational points about preserving, protecting, and respecting the local land and community. Each vendor must direct purchases to read the information before completion of the sale. Hold the event from Tuesday through Saturday, confirming that the Grand County Sheriff and the Moab Police Departments, scheduling the officers at the designated locations. The event holders will also pay for the cost of the extra police officers. Participants not to ride UTV in residential areas before 7:00 AM or after 9:00 PM. Participants to keep within the posted speed limits. Participants to slow down in town due to protest and traffic. All participants must watch the UTV educational video on wwwdiscovermoab.com website to educate about riding in Grand County. Upon registration for the event, the event holders are embedded in the educational UTV video on their registration page and website. Before the participants can confirm their registration, they will have to watch the UTV video before they can move forward to complete their registration. The event holders will also have UTV videos running through the event, permitting with participants. The Rally on the Rock organizers will continue to provide donations to local organizations in Grand County and Moab as they have done in the past years. Prior donations have resulted in thousands of dollars donated to the community. And authorize the chair to sign all associated documents. And authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Can I just get a clarification on that motion, Mary? Did you, uh, so you said a probationary year, right?
Yeah, that this, that we will relook at it, uh, next year to see.
Did you use one of those paragraphs, those three paragraphs, the third one, but in, but add in probationary year?
The third?
Yeah, you used the third option and added probationary year.
I thought I did.
You did.
That's what I'm asking, because it doesn't, that doesn't show.
Oh, oh, okay, I did, okay, and I, I think it's important that, uh, because this is the only event we have, that we have this type of public outcry. And, uh, I sympathize very much with the outcry of the individuals. So, but I also understand through going to the meetings and talking to different vend- people in town that you give AUTVs ATV tours or rent them, you know, how this will be such a financial hit on our community. So, it's this really awkward balancing act.
Let me second it and have a discussion.
Oh, I thought, oh.
I second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Motion seconded by Jaylen.
So, so that's why I want it to be a probationary period, so at the end of, for, so when we, if they decide to apply again for a permit, we can evaluate and see if what we put in place will, uh, is successful in lowering the number of people that are so negatively impacted by the event. That's why I wanted it to be probationary. Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
So, I'm understanding that all of these nine parameters were discussed and agreed upon with the event organizers, is that true?
Yes, ma'am, a number of them we've been working on. It's over the years with the police department and the events council, but we actually put them in writing, you know, as a way to affirm it.
Okay, wonderful. Some pretty ambitious parameters there.
Well, if, if, if I may, um, first off, I absolutely understand the issues. I, I read every one of the twenty, there was 24 emails. I read every one of them down to the detail, actually talked to some of the ones that had a phone number, you know, and said, hey, how can we fix this? What's the issues? So, if you look at side by side, so a little bit bigger than this program, if you look at side by side sales, it's 100 to 1 Jeep sales. So, if you look at, if you come into town, like I did today from the north end, you see some Jeeps, but you see a ton of side by sides for rent. It is just, it's been a shift, it's, this thing that happened here 30 years ago when Jeeps really came to Moab is a big thing, you know? So, there's a lot of education that's going to have to happen because it's Utah law that they can ride on the streets, it's Utah law, you know, that they can go where, to get where they need to go. So, for our part, you know, they're going to be able to access BLM trails no matter what. So, for our part, that's where we're saying, hey, we'll make an extremely conservative effort to do the educational phases that we can, not let them fully register once they're here. So, when they check in, you have to watch the video that you guys put together, you know, which was phenomenally subtly done, you know? It wasn't as blonde as I'll be, but it, it was very well done. You know, it was a welcoming video, but say, hey, you know, ride respect and all that, which we absolutely are in agreement with. There's absolutely no qualms you're going to have from us as far as that's concerned. I, I personally have been doing national level events in motorsports racing and rally events since 2001, and I've never lost a permit. I'm not going to say there hasn't ever been an issue, that it hasn't been able to be discussed, but I'm willing to work with it within the parameters that you guys set, to make sure that everybody knows what's going on. Uh, we, we've worked with the sheriff's department, and I'll let him speak to that. But everything that's been asked of us as we've grown or as it's, as it's evolved, we hit that benchmark. You know, there's a couple of new things here. We can absolutely hit that benchmark. I think it behooves us as a general UTV community to do it. But UTVs are here, they're not, you know, as far as for the town, it's, it's just a, that horse left the carriage, you know, a while in the barn, a while back. So, we can do our part in education, we have a big reach, you know, then with the, all the vendors and the industry people that are here, and we're willing to do everything we can. And, um, I appreciate the potential opportunity to be successful doing that, you know, and all I can do is ask for that.
And Kurt, could you go over?
You betcha. Um, I'm not here to promote the event, I'm here just to promote the safety part of it, that the sheriff's office and the police department performed during this event. To me, this is a good event. Um, it's, it's a controlled event, um, these are good people that come here. We don't, with this event, we don't have to put 10 officers on Potato Salad Hill all day long for three days. Um, you know, basically, we do escorts from Tuesday through Saturday, and we have designated five officers each day that strictly just do escorts. And those officers are paid by the event organizers. So, these officers, they, they escort in the morning, and with the escorts, because I like doing the escorts, rather than just letting them go out and, and meet at the trailheads, these escorts are controlled, you know, and they meet at the question center in the morning. They have a, a trail leader, that trail leader is educated as far as what, um, these people are expected to do and, and as far as on the highway and on the trails. And so when we do the escorts, it, we go from the arena to Kane Creek and to the sandplats. So, we have designated areas that we do the escorts, mostly on the highway when we do Kane Creek. And these, these, these escorts are controlled through the intersections, the speeds are controlled, and we get them out in the areas, uh, within 30 to 50 minutes. And so then we don't have razors, you know, side by sides buzzing all over the streets trying to figure out where the trail is, uh, they're on the back roads, they're in residential areas, um, we take the escorts down through, uh, Mill Creek, uh, onto, uh, up to the sandplats, and then also on the highway to Kane Creek. So, again, our objective for the sheriff's office and the police department is to make this as safe as we can. And so that's, you know, that's, I'm advocate for the escorts rather than allow them just to go to the trailheads. You know, these are 600 machines at one time that we get out. So, again, like I say, 30 to 60, 50 to minutes is about the tops for get, get these people out of the Moab Valley and into the back country. In the afternoon, we start the escorts back up about 2 o'clock, and then we escort them back into the question center. As far as extra enforcement, um, we have talked, Sean and I talked, because of the way that they pay law enforcement to do the escorts, in the mornings, we can do the escorts, and then those officers will stay on duty, and they're paid by the organi- the event. And then, so they will stay on throughout, um, the rest of the morning and into the afternoon. So, um, those, uh, officers will be assigned to strictly off-road, uh, looking for registrations, things like that, so.
Yeah, I have, I have a question or a, a statement either, um, actually maybe both. I live on a street that's in a school zone, and I can almost guarantee you that the maximum problem is, is after, uh, the, the trail riding is done during the day between, say, 5 and 9 o'clock or 10 o'clock at night. And, uh, 20 miles an hour is 20 miles an hour, not 30, 35, or 40. And I think the sheriff's department could probably do a, go a long way in, in funding their coffers if they sat out there and gave a few tickets. Plus, I think it would, um, give pause to, uh, as the word got around, that, that you're willing to ticket, um, give pause to the folks that, that like to do that. Because I, I think that, uh, at least in my neighborhood, that's probably the source of, of the, uh, the consternation, uh, and just the lack of respect of, of the law, um, the speed laws and, and, you know, the traffic laws. And I, you know, and I know that we're a friendly community, and I really applaud that, but, you know, a few warnings may help.
And, and exactly, I live in a, an area too that's school zone, residential areas, and I get them going past my house all hours of the day and night. So, I kind of, I feel the same way. And I, and I like, I like the time that they can, you know, that they have that period at night from 9 o'clock at night till 7:00 in the morning, and, you know, quite frankly, I would like to see that, you know, all the time. And that's my only opinion, um, my opinion on that for the residential areas. But, uh, we will be stepping up enforcement, not only registrations but speed limits, um, and I know with the police department, they will too. So, I think that's something that, uh, you know, we will go after pretty, pretty heavy.
I know, uh, the police department and the sheriff's department at the meeting discussed getting together, you know, separately and coming up with some different ways. They talked about, like, even have certain areas that during the event, uh, residential areas that only people that can drive on those roads have to be residents in that area. Uh, they're talking, you know, so what's on here is not everything that was discussed because, uh, both the sheriffs and the police department are going to get together and look at ways that they can, what they can legally do to prevent the machines from going into residential areas and business areas.
One of the things that I also see is you get probably five plus machines together, and it's going to be loud. I mean, that's, you know, and it's, they go by my house and they're together, and it's just loud noise, you know, for that time period as they go by. So, um, I don't think you're going to get away from that as far as the noise reduction, but, uh.
Well, on that point, if I could opine, because Kurt, I didn't know you were involved, but I met with undersheriff Darryl Meacom a couple of times about this, and this was early in June, and then I had family medical emergencies that diverted my attention, um, so I haven't been as engaged as I could be. And for the event sponsor, I don't have any issues with this. I'm from North Georgia, I think I have this vibration in my body innately that doesn't even hear this noise. So, I don't have, I don't have the UTV noise problem, but I do know this community does, and I hear the community. And so I had talked with undersheriff Meacom, who said, the issue is that the escorts are necessary to keep people safe because UTVs, um, really shouldn't be on Highway 191, for example, so the escorts are necessary. And yet, when you escort numerous machines together, you're going to increase the noise, but each machine with a factory muffler on it isn't that big of a deal. And, and he and I talked through some potential solutions, and he had two proposals, and one was that, that the event holder, uh, pay the sheriff's office to inspect, make sure there were no, um, aftermarket mufflers put on that would increase noise. And he thought that inspection could be relatively simple. Or two, require the permit holders to actually put muffler silencers, um, which are not that expensive per machine. And so I, I did, you know, family chaos that prevented me from sort of pushing that. I missed the June special event committee meeting, I didn't even know about the August one, or I would have presented this there, um, but our undersheriff was very supportive of this idea in exploring a muffler solution. So, do you have any comments about that?
Well, um, I, like I said, I've, I've done this a long time. The state of California is really rigid when it comes to sound, um, especially on state lands. The BLM is in certain areas, not in others. So, the oddity of this, and I'll get back as, this go, segue back to what you're talking about, is that as far as enti- uh, agencies are concerned, BLM, SITLO, all those were in great standing. So, it's, it's different to be on this side of it. So, to answer your question, um, noise on a side by side, most predominantly, the droning noise that you hear is caused by the tires. I, if you could go to 62 dB on least, on everything made, I'm all for that. I personally use motorcycles more than side by sides, and I prefer them to be quiet. The, uh, but as far as saying you can't come until there's a sound limit, if that gets enacted by BLM or by the city, you know, that says, hey, there's an exact sound limit, the problem with that is, and even the, the, uh, state people with California, which was the biggest issue, was really setting that up to where it's actually accurate. Yes, you can do a stand, and it, it just has a lot of inherent issues. There's a lot of things that accounts for that. A vehicle's quiet at idle here, but you drive it down the road because it's got lug tires, all of a sudden it's going whoa, 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 you know, just like the, the Jeeps will do when they're going fast. So, um, in general, it's, it's a very hard thing to control. The industry hasn't wrapped their heads around selling aftermarket quiet exhaust. There is no reason to put an exhaust system on a car, honestly. And these things come with 180 horsepower, I don't think you're going to notice if you have 185. But, um, in general, majority of our participants don't have aftermarket exhaust. No, I know, that doesn't mean all of them do. So, we do have some of them that do, but our only exhaust vendor at the event, SLP, specializes in a quiet exhaust, and that's what they sell. But that's our only exhaust vendor at the event, um, and they've been with us since the beginning.
And I did a lot of research on how you measure noise, and I agree, it, it's not a solution. But in talking with the undersheriff, he believed that you could inspect, I suppose exhaust might be the right word instead of a muffler, but you could inspect the machines to ensure that this silencer product was on there or not. It didn't have to be a particular company or brand, but is that not true that?
No, you could. An OEM, so if it was OEM, um, that's what I'm referred to, just from the factory, those have to meet California standard because everything has to be made to California. But that's basically sitting there at idle, um, and then, you know, a few different variations of that. It's not the running down the roads, running down the road noise is worth, is problematic. So, speed control, to me, and I, I'll do whatever you want to do, but speed control is the number one, you know, keeping them below, like if it says 25 miles an hour, let's do 20 or 15. It's working on that and making sure that, at least during our event, we do as much as we can to control it through enforcement, because I agree with Mr. Morse that the more tickets, the better, because it really sends a message. I know it's problematic, but I, I absolutely, I've, we've always talked about this, I'm like, go write that guy a ticket, he doesn't have a license plate, you know, those types of things. So, um, in any case, I'm, I understand your issue and your point, I guess not your issue, but your point, but I think the number one thing we can do that's productive is to slow them down, because that's where most of the noise comes from, because they're doing higher RPMs, more exhaust noise, more tire noise, more, you know, so it just all culminates into what it is. It's a piece of plastic running down the road operating, I mean, the whole thing is. So, um, but I can, but it, that is part of the discussions that we had at the last meeting, that, you know, putting an emphasis on that, you know, highlighting the advantages of it, those types of things, or the disadvantage of doing louder exhaust.
Just so I understand, out of the factory, it's the 62 dB level that's set by California, and some people take that exhaust off and therefore it's louder?
No, I'm suppo- you misunderstood me. 62 is not, I said if everything could go to 62, that'd be great. But 98 dB is the limit for public lands in, um, California. And that's how it's tested, and it's, you know, three feet, five feet, you know, it's specific, you read the regulation on it. So, um, I guess to answer your question, from the factory, OEMs have to meet that regulation. Well, some of them are inherently louder because of the engine design versus like a Can-Am is very quiet because it has an inline engine. So, anyway, just go over there.
One more thing. Um, one of the things that I would like to see is that when they register, they have, they have to provide a, a plate, a license plate to drive on the road. And it's not our responsibility to go through every vehicle there and determine whether or not they have a plate. If they get out on the road, they don't have a plate, they're going to get a ticket. But I think that it's, it's the event's responsibility that that person has a plate on that machine before they register. So, they have to provide that plate number on their registration.
To that end, Lance and I have to discuss that, because we did the count last year. Out of, one of the first mornings moving off, we had, out of all the cars that left, but like 25 that didn't. like 25 that visually have a plate. Maybe it was tucked away, maybe, I don't know. But we had a, I counted, I had 25. So we figured maybe there was 30 total. Honestly, if we made them all street legal as part of registration, that is no skin off our back at all to make that happen. And I think clears the water a little bit and a few other areas, but, um, it makes it simpler for them.
And that was some of our complaints that we got through the sheriff's offices. People call in and say, "Well, that, you know, side-by-side just went down the road. It doesn't have any plates on it." So we try to get there as quick as we can, but, you know, we can't catch them all. So, you know, and there's, not only with this event, I mean, this is May, and this is our busiest month of the year. And, you know, you've doubled the amount of side-by-sides that come in, not only with, you know, from the, the event, but just people coming in for that month and that, and that week that aren't even registered with the event. So a lot of these people are going to be, have unregistered machines, and they'll be on the road, so. But that's something that we will and we are going to do is beef up our enforcement on speeding and registrations and whatever else that comes up.
And last thing too, that, uh, as far as having the registrations, we don't, if that needs to be a requirement, we have no problem with that. Um, and as, and last thing, it was mentioned about times. We've already asked the BLM last year and this year if we can shut down the Hell's Revenge Gate essentially to where that will be closed at 10 o'clock to just help stop the traffic. Um, they said they can't do that. Uh, so that, that was a limiting factor by the BLM. And lastly, we're going to work on a traffic control plan that's given to the participants to say, "These are your approved roads." Nice visual articulate map that says, "Stay on this road, don't go on these roads," you know, basically red zoned, those types of things. Uh, so more, uh, little things, but it's, you know, concerted effort to make everybody...
I think it's the education part of it too. We really need to educate these people.
And I think that's a, a big part of, uh, the request here that is coming from the group, so.
I would like to amend my motion to include that all participants are, like, have a street legal licensed vehicle. Can I do that, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good thinking.
Well, I think you should add, um, uh, with identification, the license provided to the event holder.
Can I just make a comment also?
Yep.
Prior to...
Just a second.
I know. And I wanted to make a comment before somebody seconds.
Whoa, okay.
Um, and I grew, I've grown up around this stuff my whole life, and I actually helped my uncle change out his exhaust to an aftermarket exhaust. It's much, much louder, and I know that, um, personally. And it's also, in my opinion, I think the way that I read the administrative code, if you're going to be licensed and driving on public roads, your exhaust system needs to meet the OEM standards. And so to me, you know, adding that in to the, to the requirements here, that you've got to have an OEM compliant exhaust system is probably one of the best things you can do to reduce noise.
So add that as well?
Well, the only thing I would say to that, that's a slippery slope, because now you're talking about Harleys riding through town, you're talking about...
I'm just talking about this event only.
Yeah, this permit.
This permit. People that belong to them.
I just was wondering how, is there a way that the city and the county are going to be able to work together and figure out which part of these, if you give a citation, who's, are they here for the event, or are they just here on their own?
Well, regardless, I mean, if they're, if they're not registered or even in the event, they're not here for the event, or they are, I mean, um, they don't have a registration, they'll get a ticket. Simple speed, so.
Is there a way we could figure that out?
Well, they do.
So if you give a rally ticket?
We mark all, we mark all vehicles.
Yeah, they're marked. Mark, mark, point three has, they are marked.
And that's the way it's always been. So the sheriff, when he can tell.
All right, so we had a substit, is this a substitute, substitute motion?
Well, I never got, to the, I never got stuck on a substitute, so if...
You got interrupted.
Yeah.
You can't, uh, that, that's going to preclude some states. I don't have a list in front of me, but some states do not allow you to license side-by-sides. So that would preclude those people permanently from coming. But, yeah, I don't know that number off the top of my head, but I do know that there is some states that absolutely do that.
Well, that's not true. I mean, they can trailer their machine up to the trailhead, meet with the group.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying, she's saying if it's, everyone, the participants has to have a street legal vehicle, then you've dropped out a couple of states of people. I mean, it's gone.
Right.
So if they're going to meet the trailhead, so be it, you know. I, that's the only thing I want to make sure that you understand.
Yeah.
Some states do not license. The states that are local, I, and I have, Lance is better at that than I am, because that's his side of it.
I would have thought that was Utah law, that they had to be licensed.
They have to be licensed to drive on the road in Utah.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, they have to.
Not be on the road.
No.
Have to be on the road.
Yes.
Right, but that was part of, originally, when we did this, years before, that the escorts was originally part, that was part of it.
Oh, to get around that.
To alleviate that issue, because that was before Utah had license, you couldn't, there wasn't nothing licensed in Utah. So that was the way through originally. And that was a long number of years ago, but that was the history of it.
Interesting. I don't think that's legal, but to get around it with an escort, I think.
I'm just telling you what it is.
And, and as far as we're concerned, they have to be street legal, even through the escorts.
Okay, that's my...
So street legal means having a license?
Yeah. And I think for this event, I mean, I guess we get back to which one is going to be licensed and which one isn't. I think for this event, every machine has to be licensed, because, I mean, you take the machine in a state that doesn't have a license, and then so they come here and they want to trailer it, then we're getting back to, you know, they're going to sneak in with the groups, and I think that's what hap, it's happened in the past. Instead of them trailing it to the trail, they just jump right in with the escorts, so...
And so Chris, you were saying that we should have, uh, as well as all the participants be licensed, that they also have, did you say it was OEM exhaust?
OEM compliant exhaust. And I, I also think that that's a requirement to be street legal too.
Well, I think even if they have an aftermarket exhaust, they have to meet that certain decibel. So, I mean, if they have an aftermarket exhaust and they're still within that, that range of decibel, I think they're okay, Chris.
Well, yeah, but nobody's going to, nobody's going to change their exhaust out for another one that's OEM compliant.
Right, and we don't have the capability of measuring the sound of, of the exhaust.
No, but I'm just saying, I mean, if they're going to change their exhaust, it's going to be more, way more open. That's the whole point.
Right. We're going to know, I mean, if they've changed the exhaust.
So substitute motion to add...
Let's do an, and this one, let's do an amended motion, otherwise you're going to have to read all that all over.
Amended, amended. I mean, I want to amend my motion to have them, uh, all participants be licensed and that they are OEM compliant.
All machines.
All machines, not the people.
May I make a friendly addition to that?
Yeah.
Uh, and items, uh, two, eight, and nine on the requirements, um, as outlined below, I would also like to add the word vendors as well as participants.
The vendors?
Yep.
In which numbers?
Can you repeat that?
In, in item two, eight, and nine.
Two, eight, nine.
Yeah, require participants and vendors to sign the pledge committee, and then, and all participants and vendors must watch.
So, uh...
And add the word, uh, then, uh, vendors to section two, eight, and nine, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents. Is that clear?
Can you clarify, can you please clarify this OEM exhaust, or this OEM compliant? There's, that's completely different. OEM compliant needs, needs a sound limit set by, to me, set by the state. Is that what we're referring to?
I need...
Because if it's going to be factory OEM, if that's, that's, I mean, I just...
Which, uh, Kurt, which would be the easiest to monitor? OEM just compliance or OEM?
Probably OEM. I mean, I know that in, um, the administrative code, it, I don't think it says compliant. It says it needs to meet OEM factory specifications.
Yeah.
So should we choose...
But the, but I mean, we, we can do whatever we want with regard to our permitting process for an event. And so if you, I mean, we, we know that we're not going to be able to do any sound measurements, so probably just OEM exhaust is about all, I guess, all you can really do.
Okay.
Or go by what the state compliance is for the, the decibel.
Yeah, those are, I think those are actually federal standards that the state adopts. Um, but then again, you know, trying to measure that outside of a anticoach chamber, you know, you can't really get a good value, so.
Yeah, and I think it goes back to the point of if you got five machines, let alone 600, they're going to be noisy no matter what, so I don't know. I, I appreciate the effort on, on trying to...
I disagree, and I know very personally that that's not true.
If they, if they have the standard mufflers, they're not as noisy as when they change them out.
So did we capture what we needed in the motion? We've got some head shaking over here.
Did we? Well, I mean, there were some comments here, and what I have that you said was your turn.
Uh, so Mary McGann amended the motion to require that all participants are licensed and have OEM exhaust systems, and add, uh, vendors to sections two, eight, and nine.
Yeah, they're machines licensed.
Uh, machines, yeah. Participants' machines, that's what I have written down.
I'll correct that, because Mary said OEM compliant. That's why I brought that up.
She just changed that, didn't you?
What?
So did you, is your motion OEM exhaust or OEM compliant exhaust, Mary?
Which would work the best, Kurt? Compliant.
Well, if you say compliant, then you're going to have to do sound measurements.
Then exhaust, well, then let's do exhaust. OEM exhaust.
Now, wait a second. Now you can't quiet a vehicle down, so that means SLP now can't come to the event, because that's what they sell, is quiet exhaust. So, but I'm, you go dent your factory exhaust, smash it, rock crawling, whatever, back, you know, you go up, back down, then you have to buy a $900 muffler. I, I don't, I just think...
Or quieter.
OEM com, OEM exhaust or quieter? I don't know.
Or quieter. Or quieter, that's a good point.
I think you know how many people have aftermarket exhaust, and that's probably why you're resisting.
No, I think you, I don't think you understand the, the difficulty of, of that as a scope of, of sound. I mean, I personally dealt with this. Difficult, it's, so I want to be noise compliant? Yes, absolutely, I want to be noise compliant. But we have a statute for that, you know, and it says what the limit is, and I think that's fair.
And I, I agree. I think, I think if they have an aftermarket exhaust, that exhaust still has to meet that standard, that decibel standard. I mean, it doesn't matter. I mean, if they have an aftermarket exhaust and, and it meets the standard, then I think that's what, I think that's with any vehicle.
So if they all...
I say that's for our event. So whatever happens, you know, somebody else comes into town, blowing loud exhaust, that's, that, we can't really control that. We can educate them, but we can't control that. But I can say for our event, we can set the decibel limit. You're not set it, but more like just restate it for the state code, or whichever is lower, BLM, state, city.
But that's not enforceable. That's a problem. We can't measure it, so getting at what exhaust you have on, we can.
We, we can get the tool, the device. I think we can probably borrow one or get one from somewhere where they measure exhaust levels.
From my reading, the problem is you can't do it roadside because it's too loud. So you have to do it off-roadside, and what does that look like? I'm not sure.
I'm going to second Mary's motion.
Good job.
With the...
With all the, all the accoutrements there too. Chris will be there, isn't he?
We got it? It's, so my understanding is it's the OEM standard or quieter?
Uh huh. OEM standard or quieter. Uh, uh, have licensed and that we add vendor to item two, eight, and nine.
Any further discussion? Uh, seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the permit for Rally on the Rocks?
So hold on, we got to do, we got to first vote on the amendment and then vote on the main motion.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All those in favor of the original motion with these amendments?
Aye.
Does that make sense?
Do we need no motions?
I believe so.
We can find the first one and do the second one, I mean...
We had to agree that we were changing the original motion.
Oh, okay. All right, Kurt.
Okay. All those in favor?
Of the original motion?
Of the amended...
Amended motion?
Yeah, yeah. All those opposed?
So you're opposed to which part?
The...
Amendment or the main motion?
It all passed, and I was in opposition.
To both, right?
Sure.
Okay.
Did you say you...
Well, I voted yes on the first one, but that doesn't tie me, it's, sorry.
So you voted yes on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just let me get this straight.
I was keeping it rolling.
So just to be clear, when, when a motion is seconded, it's in the ownership of the body, and so you don't have, you don't go to the second for approval. It's in the ownership of the whole body. Um, and then so the main motion carries five to one, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you for all your work on, uh, these, uh, additions to the, the process. I know it was a lot of work. I appreciate all the effort that everyone put in to, uh, trying to create great events for our community.
I pass the motion. I would, I would like to move item R to, uh, after item U, because that will help us move so that the people that need to leave can leave.
Motion to move item R to after item U, made by Mary.
We do have a staffer, an hourly employee waiting on that one. What?
We have a staffer that is waiting.
For R?
Okay, never mind.
Was she calling in?
No, she's right here. Never mind, we'll just do it.
Okay, item R, adopting proposed ordinance, approving amendments to ordinance number 521, and ordinance repealing Grand County Code Chapter 8.16 Public Assemblies, Sections 8.16010 to 8.16.110, and enacting a new chapter 8.16, Sections 8.16010 to 8.16140, governing the permitting of special events. Carrie?
Hi, how are you guys?
Good.
Thanks. Um, so, you know, we've been working on this for quite a while. Well, I took this back to the final edits from Christina to the committee, and we all through, so it is all in the president's hands.
Thanks for that. Jaylen?
I move to adopt the proposed amendments to ordinance number 521, and ordinance repealing Grand County Code Chapter 8.16 Public Assemblies, Sections 8.16 to, I mean, 8.16.010 to 8.16.110, and enacting a new chapter 8.16, Sections 8.16.010 to 8.16.140, governing the permitting of special events, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Jaylen Zawoks, seconded by Mary McGann. Discussion?
Yes.
Go for it.
Um, this is a really substantial edit. I do have a... I do have a few that you might not consider substantial, but in the fifth whereas, we need to add the word "not" to the sentence that says, "Providing such services in order to ensure special events do place an unreasonable burden on the fiscal well-being of the county." We would like it to not place an unreasonable burden.
Duly noted.
That was my first one. The others are kind of formatting, but they're also, I think they're readability issues. Toward the end of the document, everything is bulleted when there's a long list. I believe that starting with 8.16.030 definition, that those items 1, 2, 3, and so forth should be bulleted, both for consistency with the end of the document and for readability. And then. That's 8.16.030 definition. That one is not quite as critical, in my opinion, as. Well, the next one where I would do that is the last paragraph under 8.16.050 exceptions. That last paragraph would benefit from that same edit, but the two of them become more critical because it's not clear what we're requiring, what triggers a special event. This will be on page 163 of your packet, which is 8.16.120, County Council. We say that in that first paragraph, the, first of all, I'd like to clarify, it says, "The committee shall elect to refer." Do we really want that to say "shall" or "may" elect to refer a special event application?
Shall.
Okay.
So we did talk about the preferance, okay then.
Okay, then if it's going to say "shall," I, to me, the points that follow, it's not clear what triggers that "shall." Does one of them trigger it, do all of them trigger it? I suspect just one, but the way we word that.
Yeah, so you'll see after number four, it says "or," so any of those would trigger it.
So the county council wants the ability to review those
and to require the committee to defer those.
Right. Yeah, okay. I mean, I still think it could read better up in the paragraph, but that's fine.
If you want to propose a language edit, feel free, I would not take offense, Jaylen.
Yeah, I would say.
If one of the following?
Yeah, but that one, yeah. I get where you're coming from, that's good. And then the next one, I think this is the last, is the 8.16.130, it's the same issue, and I do realize there is an "or" at the end. But I would probably recommend replacing that, the last part of that first sentence, with "for any of the following reasons," instead of "on the following grounds." And that's it, I think. But the real critical one was adding the word "not" to that one paragraph. Okay?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor?
Well, let me say one more thing, last time, either, well, last time what we decided was we had about that many edits, and we decided to just punt it and postpone it one more month until you guys could see it, or we could integrate those edits into our approval tonight, which I think I got them.
Yeah, I think that the last one was a little more content oriented, and this is the readability. So I for one am comfortable including those edits in the motion. But I'm not going to fight tooth and nail if somebody feels it should be postponed.
Any further discussion? Now's your chance before I call for the vote.
Well, the vote doesn't include those, or the motion doesn't include those.
That's your cue.
I need you to tell me them again anyway.
Oh, no, my computer is about to die for lack of battery, we had such a long discussion, so I turned it off.
Does the travel council have a position on us postponing it once more? Oh, sorry, Special Event Committee?
An issue, timing wise?
Well, our next meeting will not be for three months.
So we can get it here, we just, let's just, do you want to try to do a substitute motion with, and then just iterate those real quick, real quick again, but slow enough that I can type them down?
The fifth whereas clause needs a "not."
Okay. And just tell, oh, your battery is very low.
All right, now I'm just making notes. And each of the provisions, and there were at least two where they were subsectioned within a paragraph, Jaylen would like those set out.
So can you, what I need, though, is this section that you, let's start off with the section number, and then I'll.
Okay, my computer just died.
I think, yeah, the first one was 8.16.070, cost recovery surcharge.
Well, but then she skipped back up to, the first one in order is 8.16.030A.
That was it.
And then which was yours?
Nope, it was the one you just said.
Okay. There's another one more.
That definition section was just breaking those out in bullet points.
Yeah, bullet points, and then the next one was 8.16.100. Or no, sorry. 8.16.130, grounds for denial, that's the next one.
Well, if everybody's comfortable with what Jaylen said, then maybe you can just email that to me, and I'll put it in later.
I'll do that, I'm sorry. You did get the fifth whereas, though.
I got it, too.
Okay. So I amend my motion, or do I substitute my motion?
It's probably be easier in this one to do a substitute motion because it's a short.
Okay. I'd like to make substitute motion.
Please.
I'm a handicap without my computer, so I tried to get rid of paper and look where it got me.
So the substitute motion was to adopt the proposed amendments to ordinance number 521 and ordinance repeating Grand County Code Chapter 8.16 Public Assemblies, Sections 8.16.010 to 8.16.110 and enacting a new chapter 8.16, Sections 8.16.010 to 8.16.140, governing the permitting of special events with the edits discussed and authorizing the chair to sign all associated documents?
Yes.
Was there a second? Seconded by Mary McGann, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Is that clean enough for you? Thank you, all right. Thank you. Next up is Item S, reconsideration of the fencing condition included in ordinance 594, which applied to HDHO District 5 to 1991 Starbuck Lane.
Tim Keough and Bill Winfield here. That fence is not a code requirement, and as such, we don't feel like we should be the only ones to build it. We'll build it, but for instance, the next item on the agenda, they're going to have to build a mild privacy fence as well. I don't know, that's what the county intends, but to be fair, that's what we should want.
And a little background on this, when I was running the meeting after the public hearing, I allowed public comment, and for those in the room that are out of the loop, these guys weren't in attendance because it wasn't the public hearing and weren't expecting any further public comment. And so that was a shortcoming on my end, and I apologize to you guys for that. And so. Jaylen?
I would like to move to amend, I mean to, why do I want to do repeal or amend? What's the legal thing to do, Chris?
Zachariah, what's your idea? What should we do?
You're making.
Please, it's got your name.
Yeah, so I didn't know, and when I submitted this, I had asked, I had asked for someone to verify what the appropriate mechanism would be. I don't know if you need to repeal and replace, that doesn't seem appropriate in this instance.
You're going to amend?
I think you can amend it. My primary concern was that, you know, if the ordinance was adopted following a public hearing, would you need to hold another one? And in this instance, I don't think so because you already held the public hearing. And I would say that while I tend to agree with the request that a fence is not necessary in this instance and that it doesn't add tremendous value in terms of mitigating any concerns about increased development in that area, I do want you to know that it is within your wheelhouse to make those requirements when it is contextually appropriate. So it's not explicitly stated in code, but you do have the ability to negotiate design requirements with these HDHO developments. That said, I still do agree with the developers in this instance that a fence is not, is not going to add value. In fact, it'll add cost, but not value.
Okay, then, I move to amend to ordinance 594 by removing the six-foot-tall fencing requirement as a condition of approval for the Starbuck Lane High Density Housing Overlay District 5 application and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Jaylen Hawks, seconded by Rory Paxman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Item T, adopting a proposed ordinance approving the Arroyo Crossing application for planned unit development overlay and associated master plan. Zachariah? Okay, so. This is an action item because at the last regular meeting, you held a public hearing to solicit written and oral comments on the proposed Arroyo Crossing Planned Unit Development Overlay and Associated Master Plan. In the time between the last regular meeting and today, the developer submitted an alternative master plan that maintains the number of units, the number of buildings, the general layout of the development with one exception, and that is relocating the apartments labeled Block A from the northern corner to the southern sort of interior portion of the development. And I believe that satisfies most, if not all, of the concerns raised by neighbors to this property. And so staff supports the change. You know, our role in trying to facilitate affordable housing, this will be, without a doubt, you know, the most impressive affordable housing development we'll see in Grand County for some time, both looking backwards and forwards just given the sheer number of units and percentage of deed restrictions and the affordability control measures that are integrated into the land trust's policies and mission. So this isn't an approval of the preliminary plat, as you know, it's an approval of the master. So what you would be deciding tonight is approving the planned unit development overlay and the associated master plan. Those documents would generally guide the remainder of the development, but the next steps for the developer would be to come back to the county for final plat approval. The planning commission provided a conditional preliminary plat approval already, so the developer would be coming back to you next. And based on my understanding of their timing for satisfying their financing requirements with the new market tax credits, they are going to try to do that as soon as possible. And my position would be that it would be a shame for them to lose out on those tax credits. Mary?
I move to approve the Arroyo Crossing PUD overlay and associated master plan and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Terry Morris, any discussion? Can, real quickly, can you specify that it is the master plan submitted with the date of August 5, 2019?
The master plan submitted August 15?
5th.
5th, 2019.
Rory?
So with the land trust, does that mean that the person that owns the house or the apartment doesn't own the land?
Correct. So that is the way that land trusts maintain affordability.
So how does the county get taxes for this?
So there's an assessed value on the buildings, and we'll certainly get tax revenue from those. And I would refer to Chris regarding the property tax component.
Nonprofits can apply to the assessor for a tax exemption, which you, I think, I believe the council ends up approving. So if you recall, there's been, you know, a few nonprofits that have applied for property tax exemption. And if the land trust applies for that, I'm pretty sure it, they apply with the assessor's office, and then she'll bring them to the council for approval at some point.
But without that approval, the trust would pay the.
Right now, the property tax is currently exempt, is that right?
Yep.
So. What's that?
During the building phase.
Correct, yeah, yeah. So, you know, my anticipation is that once certificates of occupancy are granted, then the county reassesses its desire or ability to provide tax exemptions, property tax exemptions. Whether you levy the property taxes or not, though, just by removing the cost of the land, you know, the affordability of those units is greatly improved, right? So, you know, maybe there's a full property tax exemption, maybe there's a a payment back, a partial exemption, I think that's up for debate in the later phase.
And can I, I just want to add one more thing. We've been, we've talked to the assessor's office in Summit County and talked to them about how they do it, and they, since the land trust has ownership over the land, they kind of separate out the property tax rules between the owner and the land trust. So even if the land trust didn't get the fee or the taxes exempted, the land trust would be responsible for paying those property taxes because they're built separately. If that makes sense?
Rather than going to the owner of the building or the resident? Jaylen?
Are these all going to be rental, or will some be for sale?
No, it'll be a mix of rental and for sale units.
And is the land trust planning on being the manager of all these units? How's that work?
So that is still, I mean, we're still early on in that. The majority of them, the land trust is not going to be a developer, and we'll be leasing out these lots to developers. So with all of the units that are for sale, that would, you know, obviously not be managed. But for like the apartments and the for-sale units, we'd be using a property management company.
Yeah, so the land trust will be involved with the land in perpetuity, and the land trust will have new board members that are members of residents of the community, so that the community has some say in what's going on above. that the community has some say in what's going on, but the land trust will have say in that, and the land trust will be involved in when a seller wants to sell their house and making sure, you know, determining what the price can be and all that, which we haven't set yet, but that was, that is how we keep it affordable to the next buyer. And so the buyers of this property, of this housing know that they aren't gonna have free rein to go to market value or anything like that, so. So their, in one way, the land trust will be involved with the management perpetuity, but of the direct management of things like apartments, not necessarily directly.
So I, as you all know, I've sadly lost my computer with all my highlighted stuff, but I will tell you just kind of where I'm at, and I've never made this a secret. I, and you know what's coming, Audrey, I've walked the land extensively, I've walked it with community, land trust members, I've walked it with landscape architects, and with my dog, of course. And I am wholly committed to, to affordable housing, but I'm also wholly committed to preserving land that we have, that is such a beautiful piece of land. And when I look at that master plan, the, or the plat, the proposed, which I know we're not approving tonight, there is just, there's something in these documents that said, do the streets take into consideration the land? I can't remember how it was worded. You look at the map, and yeah, it's, it's going right, you know, the streets kind of go in the direction of the way that drainages go, but there are four major drainages and another minor one. And when I look at the map of the proposed units, the, they just, they go right over the top of the drainages, and I just see no way to develop that number of units on that land without completely dozing the whole thing. And so I'm just, just kind of sick about that. I do want affordable housing, and as I walked it yesterday morning, I looked and I thought, well, God, can't we preserve this, this arroyo here and put a bunch of apartments up on this, this plateau? And that's, I don't see that happening with the number of units that are proposed. That's where I'm at. So I guess what I'm saying is, I, I would like to see balance, and right now it feels like we're moving way, way far away from preserving the land and, and working with it, yet adding affordable housing. And I think we can do both, I just don't think we need to do it in that concentration in that area. And I mean, I'll just say right now, it's the, kind of the same thing with the next agenda item. Thank you. I miss that. But yeah, there's very few places in the valley left, you know, the valley that, that we walk around and live and have houses, and I just hate to see it all go like that.
Can staff respond to a few of those items?
Sure.
Chair?
So first off, you know, we have heard throughout the course of the evolution of this development, many neighbors in the vicinity remark that they use the land, and they walk on the...
And may I just say, I'm okay losing the land for that purpose, I really don't care, I got lots of places I can walk my dog.
Sure. And, and I don't, I don't know if responding just to you, but, but I want you to know, you know, as a council, right, that that land is not publicly owned, and so, you know, keep that in mind. Secondly, you won't get a better shot at affordable housing than this. This is, this is without a doubt the best model that exists. You won't find another 40-acre parcel of land that was donated to a land trust, where 100% of the units will be deed restricted in perpetuity with price caps so that, or price appreciation caps, so that first owners, first renters, subsequent owners and renters will all be able to afford it based on local incomes. And part of achieving that affordability level is this, you know, sensitive balance between, you know, quality design and density. And the fact of the matter is, if you want affordability, you gotta have density. It doesn't guarantee affordability, but you can't get affordability without density. And, you know, this would be a significant change to the, to the area, that's not lost on me, and I think it's not lost on the developers as well. But, but that's a really sensitive balance to strike, and to say that we can get affordable housing without truly understanding the pro formas that go into them, I think is really just a, um, uh, you know, a mischaracterization of what it takes to build affordable housing.
We did have a motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor approving the Arroyo Crossing PUD?
Wait, I'm sorry, can I interrupt you when you're calling for a vote?
For you, Jaylen.
I can have a second go at it. I understand all those issues, as you know, I've heard them over and over and over, but I will say that while this represents an opportunity that isn't gonna get any better in terms of we didn't pay for, we don't have to buy the land because it was donated, in my mind, that's also a reason to step back a little bit, and yeah, I'm really naive, I'm pro formas, but I still would like to preserve some of that desert landscape and add as much housing as we can around it, work with the land.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries four to two with Hawkes and Paxman in opposition. Thank you. Next up is item U, approving the proposed ordinance applying the HDHO 35B district to the parcel at 1248 South Highway 91 and associated Viewgate Terrace Master Plan and Development Agreement. Zachariah?
Okay, so this is also an action item, you held a public hearing at the last regular meeting. I won't go into too much depth on the nature of the application, but will note that the developer has submitted an amendment to the master plan that you reviewed at the public hearing, and it represents a fairly significant decrease in the number of units being proposed. So rather than a 210-unit subdivision through the high-density housing overlay, the applicants have taken into account the public comment received throughout the review and approval process, and have submitted amendments that would reduce the subdivision to a total of 138 units. The number of buildings and locations of those buildings remain the same, but there have been amendments to the heights and the number of units associated with each, also in response to citizen comments submitted to date. So those amendments are in your packet via email from the applicant, they're not reflected on the master plan, and so should you...
It was emailed, huh?
What's that?
It was emailed.
Correct. Should you choose to move forward with this development, then before everything gets recorded, we would need to ensure that all the final documentation reflected those changes. So in addition to those significant changes in terms of unit count and building heights and unit counts within each building, there are some administrative changes that would also need to be double-checked, and that is to ensure that the development agreement reflects the updated master plan, and that the development agreement reflects the correct legal spelling of the owner of record, rather than Viewgate as one word, it is two words. And I will note that in our staff report, or maybe in the agenda summary, we noted that the development agreement had been reviewed as to form and content by our county attorney. That was a holdover from a prior staff report, when we had not yet developed a standard development agreement form, and so I will note that, that the applicant just used the, the current and most adopt, most up-to-date version of the, the standard development agreement form, which was drafted by our county attorney.
And the, the changes to the height, those were, remind me of the breakdown, there was five three-story, how, three-story buildings and two two-stores, is that what it?
Let me, um... Building A was originally gonna be four stories, and so that's been reduced to 35 feet now. Yeah, looks like A, A, Building A was, was originally requested to be four stories, and that's gonna be three now, and I assume the setback will be whatever the standard for the zoning is there?
We don't need that setback.
Okay.
It has been reduced, right?
Yeah, that was, yeah, the rest of the buildings were all three stories, so.
Well, yeah, so there are no more proposed four-story buildings. The four-story buildings were reduced to three stories, and the three-story buildings were reduced to two stories. So the two buildings that are on day...
Furthest from what I do.
What's that?
The two buildings that are furthest from what I do.
Correct, yeah, those, those have been reduced to two stories and 28 feet in height, which is lower than the maximum height of the underlying zone district. Do we have that?
I'm, Mr. Chair, I'm feeling a little uneasy that council should adopt something like this that's not clean right in front of you.
Yeah, I don't like it.
I'm just, I, I'm seeing an email, but it wasn't copied out, council, I don't know if it's the same email.
I didn't get it.
And besides, it's not in the public packet, I don't know, I just, I'd rather you all have something clean before you. I don't wanna hold anything up, that's just my two cents. Be sure it's all clean.
Zach, can you, uh...
I was finding it, I can't find it.
On your copy, do you have like the colors and then the letters, A, B, and C?
Yeah, I'm gonna pull it up on the screen, so we can talk through this.
Yeah, 'cause B and C, what are those heights gonna be, do you know?
B and C would be the, the maximum of two stories or 28 feet.
And this was at last meeting?
No, this is a new...
This was in between the last meeting and, and the current meeting?
Cause I missed the last meeting, but, um, did we, did we figure out the, the drainages and how the, what's going off the spring? We got that on?
So the, uh, the spring issue has been resolved. The applicant, subsequent to discovering that they had intercepted the subsurface flow of that spring and was bringing it to the surface, was obviously forced by the county to have to deal with that issue, and they submitted a few different plans, and ultimately, the plan that was identified as being the preferred solution by the county engineer and by the state, was to re-inject that spring water into the ground at that site. So that plan was approved and, and has been put into place. And with respect to the drainage, this would not constitute a final approval of drainage design, but rather a general layout of the development. Staff doesn't feel that the drainage issues are insurmountable, but obviously, like any development, especially one with drainages going through it, you know, significant engineering work there. As is often the case, you know, with these high-density housing overlays, if somebody is doing a larger development and they don't want to submit a preliminary plat in conjunction with their high-density housing overlay application, then they're probably looking to get a little bit more certainty that they would be able to develop that project before investing, you know, tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars in engineering design costs. So that's what you're approving at this stage, is, is kind of the general concept, the number of units, the general layout of the development, and the building heights and that sort of thing.
Mary?
I'm concerned that, I know, I, I looked right now for my email, and I couldn't find it, that, you know, we haven't had an opportunity to really study this, and I'm also really concerned about the units B and C, and how close they are to that drainage area, and the fact that this is a fairly controversial area that people are talking about. I, I think the public needs to be able to see what we're voting on before we vote on it personally.
I, uh, I'm not opposed to postponing. I feel like a reduction in scaling back the project...
Is good.
Wouldn't necessarily warrant a second public hearing, but, um...
You know, you certainly don't need to hold a second public hearing for a decrease, you know, of that size. The ordinance in your packet should reflect the changes.
The red lines in the summary?
Sorry. So there's a table in your packet reflecting the unit counts. It, uh, it's actually two stories at 24 feet in height, not 28, my apologies. So that should be in your packet. It's a descrip, it's a table of each building, the stories, the height, the number of units by bedroom count, number of deed restrictions, deed restricted units in that building. And then, I believe that...
It's page 217 of the digital packet.
217?
And I believe in my, um... In my staff recommendation in the agenda summary, it notes in the first paragraph, staff, the staff recommends council approve the HDHO District 35B application and revised master plan, see background details on the applicant's proposed master plan revisions. Council may wish to consider additional site planning controls and/or revisions to the updated master plan, should council vote to approve the HDHO 35B associated master plan. Staff recommends that council include in its motion the following conditions. Applicants shall submit an updated master plan document reflecting their proposed unit counts and building height changes submitted to the county Community and Economic Development Director via email on August 14th. Applicants shall submit development plans to UDOT immediately for review and determination of required access improvements. Developers shall be responsible for any required improvements. Applicant construct a privacy fence. So I do believe that we have noted the changes in the public packet.
Okay.
And the ordinance is...
The ordinance would need to be updated, but, you know, I didn't go through all of the, the work to update the development agreement and the ordinance, you know, until council decided to take action, so.
So to be clear, the changes are in the staff report, not in the ordinance or the master development agreement? master development agreement?
Correct, but that doesn't, that's not a requirement, you know, there are, you know, the council has discretion to change the ordinance however it feels is needed. So, you know, that's just what's presented to you. And part of that was, you know, perhaps some of you liked the larger development and you wanted to approve that. Perhaps, you know, there were other design elements that you wanted to incorporate, and so it didn't seem that necessary to update the ordinance when it was noted in the other documents.
But it would still be the 35B?
It would still be the 35B, but the master plan would control the development, so it doesn't matter, you know, they're not utilizing their full density in the 35B district, but the master plan would basically govern what would be possible. I will note that in this vicinity, across the street, there is an apartment development within city limits that was entitled, it has not yet come to fruition, that has more units than what's proposed on this. You know, there will likely be some higher-density development in the vicinity associated with USU Moab on the sitter property, the 320 acres that surrounds the campus. So I realize that, you know, you've received a lot of comments regarding the compatibility with this proposed project in the surrounding areas, and, you know, staff noted that many of those concerns had merit, but I think that the reduced scope of this master plan is a very significant change. You know, reducing it by 72 units is pretty significant.
Do people feel comfortable with passing this with the planning commission recommendations and the staff recommendations?
No, I'm comfortable with D, E, D, F, and G. I just have walked that land over there by B and C, and I'm just not, I would not vote for this proposal with those two units on the plan, if I make myself sense.
Which ones are those?
These two. These two are right next to this drainage. If you walk out there, it's just right there. When they broke, when they, when the engineer made the mistake and they broke into the spring, when they built the motel, there's people, there's a person over here whose well has yet to fill up with water. So I'm just really, I'm concerned about the water issue there. The ones on the south side or closer to town, I can, you know, as long as there's still the real issue with how to get onto Highway 191, but that seems to be part of what they're looking at and they have to solve before they go farther. But, and I'm also a little uncomfortable because some of it hasn't been seen, and it's a fairly controversial, but that's my two cents. I don't, I couldn't vote for it right now.
So that, is that a motion to postpone until we have an updated master plan that reflects?
If I may make comment before that, remember it's appropriate. I'd like to bring up the design standard issue again, that we did discuss a little bit in the prior meeting. Since that meeting, I did talk with some planning commission members and asked them why, when the Wyndham, who's built by these same people and is the ugliest building ever built in Grand County, why did the planning commission not discuss design standards? And I didn't get sufficient answers, but I did hear some fumbling about where there are these minimum design standards in the HDHO ordinance, and there was some reliance that maybe those are good enough. And I did intend to give you just in relevant part, that section of the ordinance, which I didn't get to today, because it was quite the crazy day. So I'd like you to also think about that, that the minimum standards are quite minimum, they only require two elements of sort of a list, so that could be, you know, a roof over one door and some parapet at the end of this other building. I do think that building is, you know, a huge eyesore, and our developer, I said that at the last meeting, and the developer stood up and was proud to tell us that it was the cheapest-built hotel in recent history in Grand County. So I do have some concerns, and I think that it's an appropriate issue for you guys to consider, you have legislative authority, that's the type of design consideration you can make. It's similar to the fencing requirement that we've talked about and some other things, which would be a site design requirement. You can add design requirements. I don't know what's appropriate, I've asked Zachariah, do you have recommendations? I think the best thing to do, if you are concerned about design, is punt it back to the PC to develop potential design recommendations.
Jaylen?
So here are my concerns. I applaud the developer for greatly decreasing the number of units. That could actually be done with almost the high-density five, but not quite, those number of units. But again, working with the land, and I think that they have done a pretty fair job of that. There's, you know, that drainage down the middle that doesn't look like it's going to be touched. But my concerns at this point are the concerns expressed by the county, well, this says the county engineer, road supervisor, and CED director have expressed concerns about drainage on the property, and the hotel development under construction is not yet entirely reserved. Oh, they did reserve that, okay, resolved. But the second one, fire department, has not provided specific comments, but they have concerns about fire protection capabilities due to water availability and water pressure. Those are pretty big. Water and sewer, GWSSA has expressed concerns about their ability to serve additional development on this parcel under current infrastructure availability and capacity. Until those three things are a little bit more solid, I feel kind of uncomfortable approving it. I will say, I don't think it's the ugliest building in town. I think it's kind of an attractive building, but my problem with the hotel is it's so close to the road and it blocks the entire view of the cliffs, so I don't like its placement, but I don't necessarily think it's ugly.
I concur, there's a lot of ugly hotels.
So I just want to note as well, so that people understand the development landscape, the underlying zone district is rural residential that allows for development at a density of one unit per acre by right. So I don't want anybody thinking, you know, if you deny this, that that is somehow going to permanently protect any view sheds or topography back there. You know, 16 units at a maximum height of 35 feet that could be placed, you know, in the vicinity of some of these sensitive areas, you know, could be allowed by right, presuming that, you know, the issues related to drainage and infrastructure and that sort of thing could be solved. So just want to make sure that you understand, when you're thinking through these issues, you know, what the trade-offs are. And that's not to say that, just because, you know, those things could happen by right, that you need to limit your negotiating ability on a high-density housing overlay, but it is important to think about that when you're considering the reasons for your support or opposition.
I do like the, you know, the proximity to downtown and to, you know, potentially a future campus, and 191 is a travel corridor, and that, you know, it could be a spot for folks that are working at the hotel to live. I think that it's an appropriate place for some project. I do appreciate that it's been scaled back, you know, almost by a third, maybe an over a third, I'm just, you know, glancing at the numbers. I think that, you know, concerns with traffic and, I mean, the sewer and water would have the ultimate say on whether they service it, right? So, I mean, that's not the point in the process that we're at right now. And so, I mean, I am, I like that the high-density overlay gives us a little more say in how it's developed compared to if it wasn't applied and they just developed, you know, without any kind of overlay. And so I, I'm definitely not ready to turn my back on this, but I don't want to rush it by any means either. So in terms of tonight's action, where are we at with?
I would move that we postpone action on this item until we can have the map in, or the revised map available to the public, so maybe just the motion should be, I move to postpone this item until the following council meeting? Or should we send it back to the planning commission? Which do you think would be best? I don't think we should, I'm not, I don't think we're ready to vote on it tonight. It's whether or not we go back to the planning commission or whether or not we...
If we're to address addition, design standards, would that happen before the high-density was applied or before the final plat was approved?
No, I mean, I think if you, if you don't feel comfortable saying yes without a better sense of what the aesthetics are going to look like, then you want to deal with that at this stage. Now Christina and I spoke about her concerns with respect to design, and, you know, my personal feeling is that while, you know, you will retain, you know, discretion in, you know, many design elements regardless of how we decide to go, if you feel that the design standards in the high-density housing overlay are insufficient, we should be dealing with it there rather than the bulk of design issues at the application level. Now, I think it's fine to finalize some design and aesthetic components in this legislative process, but, you know, I think it's better to, if you feel that they're insufficient, let's get further along in the ordinance. Now, that's not saying that you don't have that discretion now, I'm just saying, I'm not prepared to give you direct and specific design recommendations. And I don't think that the planning commission is prepared either, frankly. You know, we don't have any architectural backgrounds on the planning commission, we don't have a form-based code that's really strong right now, we don't have an architectural review committee, and frankly, I don't know what kind of aesthetic we would be trying to preserve or enhance in Moab. It's probably pretty easy to say, we don't want this or this, it's going to be very hard to say, we want this, this, and this. And we're going to face that, you know, in any kind of conversation about design standards just because of the mishmash of what we've got on the ground right now. Doesn't mean we want more bad-looking stuff, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, I'm not prepared, and it's not really my forte as a planner, to give you really good design elements.
Should we postpone it or send it back to the...
So I guess my recommendation would be, if you are, if you are feeling shy about saying yes without having a better sense of what it would look like, rather than punting it back to the planning commission, I might say, you know, come back to us with a, you know, some architectural renderings that you are willing to commit to, or a range of architectural renderings or something like that. I feel comfortable with the fact that in the areas where we have received the most public comment regarding view sheds and view shed impacts, the developers are willing to commit to a maximum height that's 11 feet lower than what the base zoning district would allow, at least in that immediate vicinity, and no more than the base zoning district would allow on all of the other buildings.
I appreciate that as well. It sounds like punting it back to the planning commission isn't going to necessarily produce anything in a timely manner. We can't ask them to...
I'm going to weigh in on this. Here's what I think about this whole development. You know, I really, first of all, I applaud the fact that you realize that the densities are probably too high for the parcel, which they are, in my opinion. The second thing is that, that I would be very much more, very much more comfortable if you moved buildings B and C over to the west side of the property and put them over with the other, other buildings and left that aquifer alone completely. And I think there's, there's good justification for that, notwithstanding the neighbors, but also from the disturbance that's already been created and the expense that it's created you as a developer to have to reinject water back into the ground. And I, you know, we've got enough consideration of water in this valley, in this community, without blatantly disrupting something that we already know is a pretty, pretty done deal in terms of potential problems. So, you know, I would, I would really encourage you to look at doing that, relocating those two buildings, you know, because I think that that's probably the right thing to do. I have no problem with your trying to, you know, do a high-density development in that location. I am a little disturbed about Highway 191, but I think eventually that'll work itself out. It may not be a totally ideal solution for everybody in the community or in the state of Utah, but I think that that will get worked out between UDOT and so on and so forth. So, you know, I did not receive the email, so if you do send out another one, I would appreciate making sure that I, I'm on the list. Other than that, I, you know, I think that, you know, I would like to see this brought up at our next meeting with some substantial, you know, thought put into the considerations that have been placed on the table tonight, and, you know, give the opportunity to the council to pass or decide on the totality of the thing, you know, the HDH overlay, without any more disruption in the, you know, schedule of the developer and so on. So that's, that's my input.
All right.
So developers, is there a reason why you didn't put B and C on the other side of the...
Because that's where I'd like to put my house.
Oh.
So, yeah, it's as simple as that. My house is going to be right up above it, of those, of those four buildings, and that's where I want to put my home. So it's, yeah, it's as simple as that.
And just to clarify for all council members, all of the information that I would have forwarded is in the, is in the packet. It's primarily the update to the development table. So I think I misspoke and actually didn't send an email and provided the information in the packet with the explanation in the staff report.
So we did get all the information?
You have all the information?
That's what I was...
Correct.
Thank you.
So back to an action for this evening. I think there was a motion made to postpone until our next meeting?
Well, that was one thing that was talked about.
I had never got a second, so is there...
I don't think she got clear on her motion. She was debating herself.
Yeah, I was trying to get input from the council.
Oh, right. I don't think we need to send it back to the planning commission.
Yeah, that was, and I don't know if... Oh, shoot, now my computer's being ornery, I'm sorry.
I can make a motion.
I can make a motion. I mean, to be honest, I, I know that it's not very nice to make you wait again and again. It's been a grueling process, but I kind of want to see this pass and be a good project, and I'm just worried if we take it to him tonight, it's not going to pass. So I'm going to make a motion to postpone this until our next meeting.
Motion made by Jaylen Hawks, seconded by Mary McGann. Any discussion?
Just that, you know, to have the accurate revised documents in, in the packet would be great, and I think it would also be beneficial to the project because I don't believe that the public is aware of the concessions that have been made, and I think it would be really good to get that out to the public in the new packet.
I just have one quick comment for staff, if that's all right. When you draft your suggested motion, will you make it clear that the motion is to approve the ordinance?
Yes.
And then, you know, unless you have very specific amendments to that ordinance already lined out, I wouldn't suggest that the council approve an ordinance unless you know exactly how it's going to be amended, and you can put that in the motion. Because that's really the legislative act right there, is the approval of the ordinance.
Point taken, and, and I would also note that I don't necessarily get to decide all of the conditions of approval, so you all have to take that onus yourselves.
I like the recommendations that were presented in the summary here. So those bullet points could be, uh, would everyone like to see those bullet points included in the ordinance? The staff recommendations and the planning commission recommendations?
And the master plan.
And the master plan.
Of course.
Yeah. Well, we do appreciate you guys working and hanging in there, and we want this to be something that we're all excited to have and part of our community, so it's, it's worth taking the time.
Real quickly, before you do vote, because I am certain that I will get questions afterwards, I would, I would request that you provide a little bit more direction as to changes that you might want to see in the master plan rather than just saying, you know, everything that's here, but maybe not in the exact form that we want it, you know, represented, because that's not different than, than what you've got in front of you tonight.
Okay.
You want that this evening, or...
Well, I just think that, you know, the developer needs some direction, because how are they going to come back to you with something different if they don't know where you're at in terms of proposing? I think that they've heard some commentary about the location of buildings B and C, some concern about the drainage, but, you know, I get the sense that that's not the sum total of what is giving everyone pause for concern.
That's my greatest...
I, I can see, that's my sum total, okay.
That's my concern.
I think a lot of the things that, that was coming up for me would be things that would get addressed later in the process with access to the property, traffic congestion, the ability for sewer and fire to respond and service the area, but that's not necessarily where we're at now. I think the, the recommendations of installing a privacy fence, you know, like you already lowered the, the heights, I think that those are a step in the right direction, so that's where I'm at.
Okay.
So we have a motion to postpone until the first week in September. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Did you, was it, all those abstaining? Motion passes four to one with one abstention, with Mr. Paxman in opposition. Is that a quality summary? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Chair?
Please.
Being that we're, Evan and Christina and Zachariah need to get on the road, I move that we move into closed session to discuss character, professional competency, or physical or mental health of an individual, and I promise anybody that needs to stay for anything that this will only be a five to 10-minute closed session.
Second. Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Terry Morse. All those in favor of closed session?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. At...
Sorry, Joe.
The time is 7:11. We're heading into closed session.
Yes, I did.
Character, professional competency, or physical or mental health of an individual.
Are you taking that?
No.
I can do that.